Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for December 5th, 2017. Happy holidays to all. Item number one, roll call.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
And Mayor Mars.
Here. Thank you very much. Let's stand, all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Under the umbrella of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number three, 3A, special presentation recognition of the Show-Off Shakopee winners. And Kristen will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we're here to recognize our 2017 Show-Off Shakopee Photo Contest winners. This is the fifth year of our photo contest and each year we continue to get great entries from our residents and also those who attend school or work here in Shakopee. This year our theme was community, so we asked people to submit photos that celebrated community and what community meant to them. We had some great entries and a panel of staff or volunteer judges chose three runners-up and a grand prize winner. So, we're gonna recognize them tonight. I'm gonna start with two images here. We actually had two photographs that were taken by the same individual that were selected as runners-up. This one was called Shakopee Water Tower and it was by William Schlepper. He also took this photo from the Summer's Concert Series in downtown. It was called Rhythm on the Rails. So, I'd asked that William Schlepper would come up to receive his prize. I'm gonna have you actually hold this because we're gonna do a photo.
Great photos.
Yeah.
Did he sign them for us?
Hmm.
Oh, okay. That water tower was the first of its kind, very historic site in, uh, the country.
Whenever you guys hold on a second, a photo, one of them didn't come up. Our third other additional runner-up was by Prina Boudreau, who could not be here tonight. Her photo is called Life Under the Rainbow.
Where is that site?
Up by the soccer facility?
Yep.
Yep, it's from the Seventeenth Avenue Sports Complex.
Soccer complex?
And our winning photo this year, which wins a cash prize of seventy-five dollars, was by Christopher Anderson and it's called Rainbow Waterfights. It was taken during our fire department's annual water fights downtown, so I asked Christopher also come up, please. And I ask Council as well if you guys would come down here if we could get a photo with, of all of you. And we'll have you stand in the middle.
Congratulations. Your work is very great. We've been doing this for a couple years and it's, uh... We've been doing this for a couple years. This is a great program, a showcase, local amateur competition. And the pictures show off the years have been great.
They have been fantastic. I'll have everybody squeeze together just a little bit and smile.
Thanks to all very much.
And I will add that these photos will be on display here. The photos will be on display here at City Hall in our hallway out here. We're also going to have the winners and several of our other entries are gonna be on display at the library through December. So, if you get a chance, stop down and take a look at them.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations and thanks again. Moving ahead then to item number four, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, deletions, corrections? Mr. Reynolds.
The only changes, Mr. Mayor, I should say additions, are that we have in 5B1, there's our placement attachment on the Parks and Recreation memo for those of you looking at home. There are no changes for what's online. And on 10A1, the Shakopee Chamber of Commerce has their profit and loss budget as well.
Uh, Culture Whiting?
Motion to approve the agenda.
And I have a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Agenda's been approved. Moving ahead to item number five, the consent agenda. Are there any changes, corrections? Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Mayor, we will be pulling 5A4, the ordinance number 975, which set fees and charges for the City of Shakopee from the agenda, or excuse me, from the consent agenda.
Others? Matt?
The 5B1 on the table was, was the difference with that one, from what was in the packet?
The difference is that there was a discussion and issue in regards to the park determination fees. So, essentially, the memo that's included here is consistent with what Council was looking for.
And this was on the official agenda, on the online versus the packet?
That's correct.
Mayor? I'd like to pull 5A1.
Counselor?
Move that consent agenda as modified.
I have a motion and a second by Culture Whiting to, for the modified consent agenda, which has one item pulled from consent, 5A1 with one removed by staff, 5A4. No discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oh. I apologize. Before we vote...
Again.
Again. I apologize. Um, we will now read the modified agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for December 5th of 2017. 5A2 approves the minutes of the November 21st, 2017 meeting. 5A3 approves a wine 3.2 on sale and Sunday on sale liquor license for Azure Corporation doing business as Azure Paint Studio located 8034 Old Carriage Court. 5B1 adopts resolution number 7955, which approves the final plat of Ridge Creek Second Edition. 5C1 approves closure of McKenna Road from Eagle Creek Boulevard to Tinta Okonkou on January 19th, 20th, and 21st of 2018 for the North Star Dog Club Wakian Henyan Dog Derby. 5C2 declares eight forfeited vehicles held by the police department as surplus property and authorizes their proper sale or disposal. 5D1 authorizes the execution of an agreement extension with S.E.H. Incorporated for design services for the 2018 lateral pipe rehabilitation project number SAN-TAC-18-TAC-003. And finally, 5D2 approves the job description and authorize adding, authorizes adding a water resources environmental engineer position within the Public Works Department Engineering Division.
Thank you very much, and again I apologize for the motion for the consent agenda in a second. It's been read into the public record. Now, for the public record, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to go to item number six. I'd like to recognize any citizens that would like to come forward on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record and welcome. An item not on the agenda. Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Jody Brennan. I'm from at 122 Sixth Avenue West. And with me is Corky Mars, Dan Adamson, and missing tonight is Yone Jung. We are putting together a fundraiser and we are fundraising for art in the downtown area. And our first phase is to raise five thousand dollars, which would be for the design and mock-up of a Reverend Pond statue. Samuel Pond, make sure I get that right. And, um, and, uh, once the design has been completed, we will continue on raising funds for the whole, um, construction of the statue and the installation of the statue in the downtown area. We've chosen the same artist that's doing, has completed Chief Shakopee. And, um, right now you can send a check to the City of Shakopee at 485 Gorman Street. And please notate on the check that it's for the Reverend Pond statue. And, um, I think, I think that's it. Do we have anything else? I think that's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions? Counselor Lehman?
Where might the statue be placed?
He'll be, he'll be down in the downtown area.
So, no official location has been determined?
No, the, the location, Counselor Lehman, is, if you remember, in the plans for the downtown Chief Shakopee statue, Reverend Pond will be on the other side of River City Center. And if you go down there, you'll see an oblong placement of red bricks that will outline where that statue will go.
So, by where the Christmas tree was.
Yep. But... It's about ten foot north of the Christmas tree. Yep, exactly.
Okay, alright.
That's an easier way of saying it.
Well, I wish you great luck in your endeavors. Sounds like a very worthy cause.
Thank you.
Yes, there was a editorial in the paper over the weekend that read very well to kick off this thing. And I know they've already accepted some donations. And this committee looks very familiar. You're the committee that, for a pop-up garden, correct?
We are. We are part of a committee for the pop-up garden. We have another member of that committee, but...
Well, you found another great cause, Culture Whiting.
Yeah, how, well, you mentioned the pop-up garden. How, how is progress on that going?
Good. We were able to do one garden this year down by Huber Park. And we're gonna be working on getting more gardens going for next year and getting people more involved in it.
Great, thanks for your community involvement.
Thank you.
Counselor Luce? What is the size of the statue and what is the estimated cost?
We have not come up with a design yet for the statue. That's something that we have to raise our first, have our first fundraiser for, which is the five thousand dollars. But we are estimating that's gonna be at about a hundred and fifty thousand total.
About a hundred and fifty, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thousand, okay. Great. Great cause to donate to, and that's a tax deductible donation to the organization, right?
That's right.
Yeah. Great. Other comments, questions? If not, good luck. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Any other resident citizen that would like to come forward on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. On an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on then to item number seven, business removed from consent. 5A1, Culture Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had just talked about this at the last meeting. This is in regards to our purchasing policy. And I didn't have anything that concerned me about it, but I wanted to let the citizens at home know that we have looked at this. There has been some other issues in the community. And we've added a few items here and changed a couple items regarding wholesale club memberships, memberships, usage of the, those wholesale memberships and prohibited purchases. So, I appreciate looking into that. I, I, I think this policy is sound and solid and I just wanted to make sure that the members at home or community members knew that we have looked at it.
Well, and I too appreciate that we firmed up some of the language and actual identified thing, you know, no personal purchases, et cetera, obviously, and I think tightening up a policy like this goes a long way. Uh, Mr. Reynolds?
And just a reminder for council, in January, we will be bringing forward an example of how a purchase actually works through our system. You'll see, at, at no point is there less than three eyes on any one purchase and at some point, there's as many as five. So, hopefully, that brings some degree of, of comfort to citizens and, and this particular body as we continue to try everything we can to tighten up our policies and make sure that we're doing what we need to do.
Okay, great. Other questions? Culture Luce? Is there anywhere on the city website where the citizens can view this? I think they'd be a lot more at ease if they can just read it over themselves. Could we, if we adopted that, could we get that out there?
Yeah.
Just mayor councilmembers, it, it, probably stays in the agenda packet here. We will, among our budget, a lot of our management policies are in there, I believe. They have to double check to see if this isn't our budget document as well, but all of our management, other management policies are in there as well. Financial management.
Uh, Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to the City of Shakopee purchasing policy.
I have a motion and a second by Culture Mokel. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to item number eight, recess for EDA authority. Culture Whiting?
Make a motion to recess.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, 5A4, yeah.
Yeah.
5A4, alright, boy. 5A4, off agenda, off consent. Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was some concerns expressed in regards to removing sales tax from some of our rental fees for Parks and Recreation and also in regards to where we are with our ice, uh, time fees for our ice rinks. And so, Ms. Polly is here and she will be able to address those particular issues. The sales piece, Darren can also give some more information if necessary. Sales tax piece.
Welcome, Ms. Polly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The questions regarding the ice rentals, we raised the ice fees by ten dollars for our prime time for this year and for twenty dollars for our non-prime, starting this year that we're currently in. It's the first year we've raised those fees. Typically, we had always done a jump of five dollars per year. We did a bigger jump this last year with the new facility. We're still gaining clients. And just to give you an idea, since we've opened the new facility, we've gained twenty-six new customers for ice rental and eight new customers for turf rental. So, staff is making the recommendation for one more year to keep it at the higher rate that we just raised it to. That was the bigger jump than normal. And we are looking at another increase of five to ten dollars for the 2019-2020 season.
Page twenty, page twenty-seven, correct.
Uh, page twenty-seven. So, it wasn't redlined, so two-ten per hour, is that the current rate?
It is the current rate, yes.
And I think we've had direction in this body before that, to try to move that up a little bit as we move forward with our brand-new ice rink. Have we had discussions for that?
We did increase from two-hundred to two-ten when we opened the new facility. So, we did a ten-dollar jump for the prime time when we opened the new facility and a twenty-dollar jump for our non-prime time with the new facility. So, this was just in place as of this season.
But you're proposing no change for 2018?
For one more year, yes, to gain clientele. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, okay. Any other comment? I, I think that we would bode well for our brand-new ice arena to, um, to raise that. I study ice rink a lot, time and cost. When our hockey rink was showcased in the National Rink Magazine, it had a little box off to the side and it commented that our average ice time was a hundred and seventy dollars. And that's below the current metro average of, of one-eighty-five of average time.
That was incorrect information.
Huh?
That was incorrect information that we did correct with the magazine. They did not have the correct information.
Any other comment on ice time? Culture Whiting?
Uh, not on ice time.
Uh, Culture?
Mayor, I would have to think that the, the metro average is looking at not brand-new facilities too.
Right.
So, um, I think we need to take a look at the actual hourly rates and, and adjust them so that we're not pricing ourselves out, but that we're not, you know, the same as a, you know, fifteen-year-old facility.
I thought we just went through this exercise a few months ago.
Well, we went through on memberships. We didn't go on ice. We had a long discussion about ice cost a year ago. And I was in contact with the City of Coon Rapids and their ice rink is twelve-years-old, I believe. And they have had a rehab, but their ice rink is a, uh, one-ninety-five average ice time, uh, average ice cost. And so, I, I look at this all the time. And I thought that, I just found it odd. I thought we had direction that we would move, scale this up a little bit, much like the membership fees. But if there's no direction for that?
Do, do we wanna take a look at it? I mean, we're not gonna be able to adjust it tonight, but do we wanna take a look at that and bring that piece back?
No, we couldn't if it's...
I, I'm good with that.
Okay.
And we can do that and bring it back on the nineteenth. I would suggest that we not approve this particular item and we simply table it then.
Table this item though.
Correct.
Of that, okay.
Well, the, this...
Fee schedule.
The fee schedule.
The, oh, the fee schedule.
Is that a problem? Oh, totally rates, okay.
So...
I will take that back.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So, Ms. Polly, another thing that caught my eye in when I was going through this is you do have some red lines on some of your room rental. And it, I think our fees were X amount plus sales tax. And now, they are canceling out the sales tax. Is there no sales tax payable to the state on certain items? Is that correct?
Correct. We just realized that from the state and Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the State of Minnesota Department of Revenue had a update to their, some of their sales tax items and room rentals was part of that. So, a lot of our room rentals that had been taxed in the past are no longer taxable. So, that's part of it there. So, that's, you know, good for our customer rentals on that end of it. They don't have to pay that Minnesota sales tax. I did notice in our fee schedule that, like, for our memberships, for our community center memberships, in the past, it had said a fee plus sales tax. In reality, we hadn't been charging that piece of it. That's not how it's been working in, in reality. That's how it's stated in the fee schedule. It's been our, our membership amount has always included the tax. And so, we always backed off. So, the, if the amount was, if it was four-twenty-two-fifty last year, it wasn't four-twenty-two-fifty plus sales tax. It was four-twenty-two-fifty and the sales tax was backed out of that. So, this is kinda comparing apples to apples, doing what, in practice, what we've been doing from, from year to year, from my understanding.
Do we pay the state ta, sales tax on a party room?
On a party room? I don't...
Rental room?
I, I don't, not if it's just a, a room for rent. No, you, you would not pay tax.
I'm trying to figure out where the state law, if they exempt room rental from sales tax, do they exempt membership?
No, memberships are still taxable.
Okay.
It's just that our fee schedule was inconsistent on how our actual practice was. And now, the fee schedule and our practice will...
So, some eight percent of six hundred dollars will be going to the state?
Right, whereas in the past, eight percent of the prior amount was going to the state.
Let's clean it up.
Counselor Whiting?
On page ten, we've added a new charge for temporary no-parking sign installations. And I guess I'd like an explanation of that one or if, if, my guess is if, like, the chamber wants to put on a downtown event and has the city put up signs, that's fifteen dollars a sign?
Mayor and councilmembers, that, that is correct. And we, when we put events up, when we have events and we need to restrict different areas for no parking, we, there's definitely a, a cost for labor and for the signs that we do put up. So, we looked at a, a couple of example events and we evaluated the costs and prorated that over, over the signs and the fee that we saw that would recoup our costs would be fifteen dollars. And our proposal would be that this, this would not be for city-sponsored events, but it would be for, for every non-city-sponsored event.
And when we're saying a city-sponsored event, would that be like our downtown events, our community events?
Um, I've, I think they might be chamber-sponsored events and those are ones that we would expect to charge.
Now, what if the, what if the event people put up the signs themselves?
We can work with them on it.
Because that could be a very costly item for a community event.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, to add on to Counselor Whiting's... Mayor, to add on to Counselor Whiting's discussion, when we did the parade on Tenth Avenue, we actually put the signs up ourselves and the city gave us these little, you know, paper ones, I guess they were, on the little stakes. And we went up and put them in right away. And so there wasn't a labor cost involved. I don't know what the signs cost or just paper, one-day-throw-away items. But you're right. If we're going to charge that on a community, it's not necessarily a community-sponsored event, but it's a community event, that's going to add substantial cost to things like a parade.
Yeah.
And when you, when you purchase the permit, like Huber Park, there was some handicap signage, and I think there was two of them. You know, you're paying, what, five, six-hundred bucks for eight hours to use the place? And then you're paying garbage and sweeping and all these other fees and stuff. And it's not, it's not hard to get up to a grand real quick. I think we just need to be careful with, and how we justify that charge. I'm not, I'm not afraid to charge that charge if it's justified, but in some of these cases, I just don't know that it's justified.
Right. I would be, I think if the city can work with these events and it is a community event, you know, I'd be okay with it to leave it in there if it is something that, you know, we need to do for other events, you know, like maybe a company wants to do a company picnic and needs some no-parking or whatever it might be. But for something that involves a community event, I'd have a problem with this.
Counselor Lewis? Yeah, I've got no problem with, you know, like a chamber-sponsored event or the city-sponsored event where we have volunteers do it. I just want to make sure from the city attorney's aspect that there's no legalities to where we could get in any trouble letting someone else put them up. They may not put them up in time. And as the rhythm on the rails and the parade, there was some towing involved. So I don't want to see any problem come out of that. So just to defer to Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, police might have to supervise it a little bit, but it's some supervision.
Mr. Reynolds?
If I may, members of council, if there's heartburn with this particular, I would, I would just simply remove it. Because then we don't have to figure out what is a sanctioned event, what's not a sanctioned event. And we can just incorporate that cost into our normal operations. As I've said before, you know, these kinds of things are a balance. You know, do we want the, the individuals who are benefiting from it to pay the fee? Or do we, you know, certainly something like a parade or something like that is more a community thing. We can incorporate that into our, in our, our normal operation budget.
Consensus to eliminate?
Yeah, I'm good with that. And Mayor, I think, if I may, I think the, the approach, like when, when they rented out Huber Park, there were some things that were above and beyond. And the city just looked at it to, what's the staff load and, and are we paying extra for that or not? And it's through the process. And I, I think that was a pretty fair process, actually. And I think that type of charge would be the same in my eyes. You know, if you've got three thousand people using the bathrooms or something and they're, they're telling you upfront, you know, here's everything you, you folks need to maintain that throughout the event. If you don't, and we have to come in and do it, here's what the charge is going to be, you know? And that's fair, you know? That puts the onus back on those that are making the need. So I would be comfortable with removing it and using that right into the, the project or the function event, I guess, to where if it's a massive sign request, it's going to be something above and beyond with a lot of staff time. And staff's going to say, you know what, that's going to be, that's separate from your, your fee to do this function. And this, what you're asking for is going to take about this, and here's what that charge would be.
I'd ask for it to be removed and used that same...
Counselor Lewis? Comment on?
I'm good.
Are you good with that? Counselor Mokel?
Okay.
Mayor, I have one other question on a different page. Let's see here. It was the permit fees, page sixteen. And I'll take the one that's five thousand to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. And I'm, I'm reading the fees and it's, it's ninety dollars plus point zero-zero-eight times the valuation minus five thousand. And I did a calculator on using that equation and it came out that we were actually paying, paying them to have a permit.
I think that, how I read that, is, is it minus a thousand or is that, maybe Mr. Kurski can shed a light on it. Welcome.
Mayor and council, it's on the value, it's minus because you're already paying upfront for that first portion, so you don't want to get double-charged.
The value less a thousand times the multiplier.
Yes.
So let's say a ten-thousand-dollar project would pay a ninety-dollar fee plus zero-zero, point zero-zero-eight.
Correct.
Do you got a calculator handy?
Yes.
So ninety plus point zero-zero-eight.
But how much was it?
Ninety dollars.
Yep.
Plus point zero-zero-eight times...
That's not how you do an equation like this.
Okay, well, I'm trying to figure out how to do this equation.
So, so the way it is, is there's a, Mayor and council, there's a base fee of the ninety dollars, and then you take whatever the value of the project is times point zero-zero-eight.
You think, you said ten thousand dollars?
Yep.
Yep, so on ten thousand, minus five thousand.
Times the point zero-zero-eight.
Times point zero-zero-eight. So you'd be paying an additional forty dollars plus the ninety.
Okay.
Plus the base rate.
Yep, so you'd be at...
Plus the ninety, which is the base rate.
You'd be at a hundred-and-thirty dollars.
Yep. So I guess my, my bigger question is, is when you read this, how does the average person know what that's really saying when...
So Mayor and council, this is all pretty much automated. So when you put in your permits, all of those things are calculated. There's no, no one ever looks at this portion of the fee. It's on our website. And as you enter your numbers, it's all automated.
Okay.
More, less? More or less? So sign fee off, ice fees off, and if, Counselor Lewis? As long as we're on ice fees. I'm just curious, where are we with the Zamboni wraps and the advertising? We haven't secured one yet. Would we, you know, we lost, what, last year, half a year? And we're already into the season. Wouldn't we be better off to turn it over to the company that was doing the rentals and get it taken care of instead of losing another year? We could do that. There's a percentage fee with what, how much ever they land. We were opposed to that before. A percentage is better than zero.
True.
Certainly. Do we have consensus on that?
Agree with that.
Ms. Polly, what was the last offer from our, from our advertising company? We had communicated here a month ago about that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd have to go back to my notes. I can bring that back with you with the ice fees next meeting.
Well, we can bring that back. Yeah, because my, my understanding is it's, what, about seventy-five to eight-thousand dollars a year in cost? And wasn't it seventy-five for ten years? Seventy-five thousand? Seventy-five for ten thou, for ten thousand? And I have made numerous presentations and haven't gotten that. You're correct.
Well, we don't know what the fees are either. And if, if the fees are going to chew up all ninety percent of that, then it's a bad idea. But so we need to...
It's not ninety percent. There's been some discussions on the percentages. It's actually, there was an offer for the percentage to come down a little bit. I still have an offer out. But certainly the, you know... I'm just thinking, you know, instead of losing another year, we might as well get it, as long as, as long as the fees are coming back to the city like you originally presented it. No, and I, you know, I think that we were kind of opposed to that, but certainly I've tried for a while and to no avail. And it just, no versus nothing. So we can bring that back. Counselor Lewis? Yeah, I just, I know you've worked on it for fundraising. I've done fundraising. I know it's not an easy deal. I think it's probably time to let the professionals do it. They might have better contacts. Bring that back.
All right.
Fee schedule, more, less? More or less? Counselor Whiting?
I'll take a stab at this. Now, just let me ask a question. We're, we're going to approve this fee schedule minus the sign fee and then bring back the ice arena fees and possibly the Zamboni advertising part of it?
Zamboni's kind of separate.
Separate, okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the fee schedule as presented with deleting the temporary signage portion that I pointed out on page number ten, temporary no-parking sign installation fee, and bring back the ice arena fees for discussion at a later date.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
And we are also going to bring back the ice resurfacer wrap information.
We said that was separate.
That's separate, but it's not part of this fee schedule that we discussed. I just figured as long as we're on ice, I'd talk about whatever the problem.
Part of it.
Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, let's move ahead then to Counselor Whiting.
Make a motion to recess to the Economic Development Authority meeting.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We're going to recess.
We'll call a Shakopee EDA order for December fifth, 2017. Everybody should have an agenda and packet of information in front of them. Is there any questions on the agenda? Any changes to the agenda? Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer approval of the agenda as stated.
Seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent to business, EDA bill list in minutes. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I will approve, or I will make a motion to approve the consent to, consent business as stated.
Miss Mokel, any discussion on the consent items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. General business, four A. Twenty-eighteen EDA special benefit levy and budget.
Good evening, Mr. President, commission members. I don't have a presentation for you tonight, so I don't know, I don't want to break your hearts, but we'll just kind of go through the, the EDA levy and budget a little bit, just to refresh you on, on that process a little bit. For the past several years, EDA has, EDA has routinely received a transfer from the city's general fund to fund operations, facade loans, and the current downtown improvement project. In essence, that transfer, it's an essence, this is a transfer from the general fund, comes from the city's portion of its tax levy. The creation of an EDA special benefit levy should be considered a budget-neutral change since the city's general levy will then not have this transferred to the EDA in it. The advantage of an EDA levy, special benefit levy, is that the levy is applied to the market value compared to a tax-capacity value that a city levy is attached to. The one benefit is, is that any properties that are in a, in a current TIF or in a tax abatement would still be, the market value levy would still apply to those types of properties. So this is going to apply to all market-value-type taxable properties. So with that, staff has recommended an EDA special benefit levy of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for 2018. This would have an impact on an average-valued home at about two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars. It would have about a twenty-dollar-per-year tax effect on that. And a million-dollar prop, or a commercial property would have about a ninety-three-dollar impact on that. And that's completely based off of the, the market value there again. State statutes do require that the city council consent, consent to this levy as well. So we're bringing this before the EDA commission tonight for, hopefully, your approval before we bring it to the city council then on the nineteenth for, for the council's approval at that point. Also attached to your, your council agenda packet tonight is an EDA budget as well. The budget includes about a hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars for wages and benefits, that, which includes a portion of the Director of Planning and Development's salary, along with an additional position that would be focused on business retention. The EDA budget also includes about a hundred, does include a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for facade loan requests and then twenty-five-thousand dollars for the Main Street program. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have in regards to the, the EDA special benefit levy and budget. And again, this is the first year in a number of years that we've done this, that the city has done this. And it really is, should be considered a budget-neutral change. We are moving the levy from the city side of it. In the past, we've had transfers that would come from the city side over to the EDA. Now we're being transparent about it and just having an EDA levy specific. That will show up on tax statements. It'll show Shakopee EDA on a, on a tax line on the, towards the bottom of their tax statement. It doesn't show on the truth and taxation statements. They can, kind of get grouped into a bunch of special taxing districts, but on the tax statement, it will be separated.
Questions of staff? Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, in your memo, so this three-fifty that we used to transfer from the general fund to the EDA. So this is a, a budget-neutral in the overall city budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then my second question, follow-up, Mr. President, that this has a cap of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, right?
Mr. President, Commissioner Mars, it actually is capped at a percentage of the city's market, or of the city's market value.
Right.
Which is point zero-one-eight-five percent. So the actual cap is about seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars. So we're picking an amount that's below that cap. We're picking a specific dollar amount to let...
I was trying to make the, trying to find out what the, the lever of cap is. So I know that the cap can be higher, but we're setting it, it sounds like, in a dollar amount at three-fifty.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We're not setting a percentage, we're setting a dollar amount.
Mr. Lewis?
What is the process to move that up higher? Is that a basic, simple majority? What, can you tell me what the process is?
At this point in time, we have, the, the commission approved a preliminary levy in September. At that point in time, that's your cap for the year. Can't go higher than that. Next year, you would have that opportunity to increase it up to that statutory percentage-wise, but for this year, we're restricted by that preliminary levy amount.
And it's based on the percentage, correct? You're going to apply that percentage to the properties?
We're going to apply that dollar amount to all the properties, spread across the taxable property.
So, so the percentage could, could come back different than what you have in here? Based on how many properties, the values of the properties?
Absolutely. I don't know what the percentage would be. It'd probably be, since three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is about half or a little less than half of that seven-sixty-eight, it'll probably be half of that, half of that percentage.
Did I hear you say it was two dollars per two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-dollar home?
It's twenty dollars. I may have said two dollars, but it's, it is actually twenty dollars.
Yep. That's, twenty is in the package. All right. Mr. Lewis?
I, I preferred the other way that we did it, where we just transferred it, because then we, we weren't obligated to do it. This way here, it's an automatic. And I look at it as we're, we're picking winners with the downtown. I mean, they're, they're going to have this money in perpetuity by the looks of it, and it can only go up. And, you know, when is enough enough to subsidize businesses? I know we want to keep our downtown vibrant, but at some point in time, they need to learn to stand on their own two feet.
Mr. Whiting?
I think that's a discussion for another time. We have a current policy in place that has a facade loan program. That'd be a discussion on the facade loan program. This is a discussion on the levy portion of the EDA, which I think is actually a good way of doing it because it is transparent. The, the tax-paying citizens know exactly where that portion of the taxes is going. And it's going into a couple of, you know, folks' wages. And it's going into that facade improvement program, which is already set. And I think if we want to have a discussion on that facade program, that's for another time, but not tonight.
Let me interject, and then you'll be next, Mr. Lewis. My concern with this is a couple of things. First is when we're taking the dollars out of the general levy and moving them somewhere else as a form of a transfer, it's a voluntary move. It's not cast in stone. And I like that flexibility. The second concern I have with that, this, is that it is a new tax, and I want to see taxes go the other way. I don't want to see more new taxes. I actually want to see less taxes, whether they're a line item or in general. The other concern I have is this is, in effect, saying that residential properties are going to pay to subsidize commercial and industrial properties if they're located in the right place in town. That's exactly opposite of what the legislative intent was of the, of the tax structure of the State of Minnesota, where the commercial-industrial tax is two-and-a-quarter percent, the residential's one. It's not a secret that everybody knows that commercial-industrial is supposed to subsidize residential. And now we're going to turn it around and we're going to subsidize commercial-industrial with residential. And I disagree with that. I also disagree with where you have four pro- for-profit, private property businesses fixing up their property, increasing their values. Some of these loans far exceeded what the policy is. And yeah, that could be another discussion, but it was a discussion when we created the policy. There was compromises made. I didn't like the policy of just giving free money away. And during that conversation, we compromised, and we decided at my request, if we cap it at twenty-five, thirty, I would go along, and I did. And, and since then, we've consistently gone over that, and, and, you know, we've given out multiple hundred thousand dollar loans, some fifties, some eighties, whatever. But, you know, this is, this, this would be endorsing going outside of our consensus and compromise policy, and I, and I don't want to do that. So...
Mr. President, with all due respect.
Mr. Mars, excuse me, I said before I spoke that, that Mr. Luce had his hand up, so we'll go in order. Mr. Luce and then Mr. Mars.
Well, the two jobs that were mentioned that this money was going to be helping to pay for, one of which we were told when the person resigned, that job would not be filled again, because for whatever reason, the decision was made that we didn't need that position, and now all of a sudden, we need that position.
It's not the same position.
That's different.
Mr. Mars?
I think this is a policy, or this levy is more transparent. It's budget neutral. And the city has had an EDA for a long time. Within the EDA, everybody is correct, there's a facade loan program that's been used, at periods it hasn't been used, and we can discuss, we can go back and look at that policy. That policy has been modified about five times over the last ten-plus years to try to get it right. There is a provision to exceed the, the cap, but just on this levy, and you bring up home values, they would see a twenty dollar increase on a two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar house. But this, this levy applies to all commercial and industrial values within our community. It's a, it's a totality levy rather than just residential. So you say, oh, resident has to, through the EDA, has to then fund the facade program. You can stop and start the facade program anytime you want. But that is not a true all statement, because businesses would pay this levy as well. And so the business you have pays this levy as well.
Yeah, like it needs another tax too. Like it needs another tax too.
No, but I'm saying that if this is neutral to our overall levy, then, you know, is, was our overall levy collecting three hundred plus thousand dollars to move into the EDA every year? It seems more cleaner to me, but that's my opinion.
I've said it before, and I'll say it again. It's okay to lower levies. It's okay to be the most efficient and most cost-effective in the, in the state of Minnesota. That's actually a good thing. That should be the goal that we're shooting for. Mr. Whiting?
Well, you stated this is a new tax, and as the mayor mentioned, that we were collecting this tax through the, through the general fund already. So, and you also stated that citizens will be, you know, subsidizing commercial. Well, they already are by being taxed for the things we would, if we had this in the general budget, we would still be using it, this money. It's budget neutral. The other thing about this is, is it's going to be going across the market value to all properties. That includes any property that has tax abatement, any property that's in a TIF program right now, they still have to pay this. So rather than leaving those guys out of the plan because they're on a tax abatement program, they have to pay this, because it's separate. So I, I, and I do believe it is transparent, and I like to see that people can see that they're being taxed for what they're being taxed for. This is what they're being taxed for. Is, is the Economic Development Authority that has the right to set a levy like this.
And I understand the, the position of the tax, tax abated or TIF properties having to pay this. I understand that commercial properties pay it also, and it's across the board. I, I get that. However, you're using these, when you had this standalone general levy dollars, and you pulled three fifty out and moved it over to EDA, the argument could be made that you're only taking but a portion of the commercial taxes that came into the general levy. You can't make that argument now. So what's the wishes of the body? Mr. Mars?
I'll make a motion to approve the special bevy, benefit levy of the, well, I may read the, I'll adopt, make a motion to adopt resolution seventeen dash five and seventeen dash six, approving the two thousand eighteen EDA special levy of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the two thousand eighteen budget respectively.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mars, seconded by Mr. Whiting. Mr. Luce?
Is this levy, or this money restricted solely for the downtown, or is this for any area the EDA decides to put it?
For twenty eighteen, it would be restricted to the budget that you have in front of you, which is for wages and the facade program.
Correct. The hundred, the hundred and fifty thousand would be for the downtown, under the facade program policy. Everything else is throughout the city.
From the levy that's captured in, in here, the excess that's in the fund is open for any project that the EDA wishes to use it upon, correct?
Per the policy. Correct.
Mr. Luce?
I believe this body needs to come up with some criteria for the other areas of town, so that they can make use of some of this money when it becomes available, because I think there's other areas besides downtown. There's no reason that we need to just focus on one area.
I'm concerned, I'll get right to you. I'm concerned that we're, we're now going to put a line item tax on property tax statements. In nineteen, in twenty eighteen, it's for the downtown facade program and wages, that at some point, it's going to grow into, we've got the business section on, on Marshall and Veriling, we've got the Southbridge Business Section, we've got all these other business areas of town, and if we're going to be fair and equitable, we're going to have to have a pretty substantial line item levy to, to treat all of them equally and make the same available for all. And it's going to get tax-heavy. That's my concern. Mr. Whiting?
I'd agree with Counselor Luce. I think, you know, within the criteria, it should be open citywide for the, for the facade loaning program. But I think that's something we should, you know, bring back, maybe.
It's going to get awful expensive.
Staff to take a look at that in the next couple of months and see what we can do with it.
It's going to get awful expensive. You're going to need to raise this levy pretty substantially.
It doesn't necessarily have to change the amount that goes into this program. It just might change the criteria, who gets to use it.
And when it's gone for the year, it's gone?
Yeah.
Okay. Could it go farther if we actually followed our cap?
Agreed.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Item number five on the agenda would be a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, January second. Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, January second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Luce. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
We will reconvene this December fifth, two thousand seventeen, City of Shakopee City Council meeting. After our EDA discussion, we are back on ten A one, annual report from the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau. And we have Angie Wickholm and Mr. Tim Zunker will present. Welcome.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just give me a second so I can get the presentation started. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. Organization, the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau is both the Chamber of Commerce and then the Convention and Visitors Bureau. The Convention and Visitors Bureau's side of the organization is funded through the Minnesota Local Lodging Tax Statute. The organization is a nonprofit governed by the thirteen-member Board of Directors. The Convention and Visitors Bureau is dedicated to increasing economic impact.
Closer to that mic for us.
Yep.
Thank you.
The Convention and Visitors Bureau is dedicated to increasing economic impact for our partners and stakeholders through tourism marketing. We actively promote our destination to leisure travelers, amateur sports, groups, group tour meetings and events. We strive to create long-lasting community and city partnerships to help in promotion of our area as a premier travel destination. Talk a little bit about what tourism brings to the Minnesota economy. Over fourteen billion in sales, which is almost forty million dollars per day, two hundred and fifty-four thousand full and part-time jobs, which is eleven percent of the private sector employment, five point one billion in salaries and wages, nine hundred and thirty million in state sales tax revenues, which is seventeen percent of all Minnesota sales tax. To break that down to what we have in Scott County, it's over three hundred and eighty-eight million dollars in gross sales and over six thousand jobs from tourism. The tourism industry has grown over the years from a ten point two billion dollar industry in two thousand and five to the fourteen point four billion dollar industry from the last numbers we received in two thousand and fifteen. To show travel expenditures by season, you can see we are a summer destination, the state of Minnesota and Shakopee, but we do have good travel during the fall and winter seasons. Talk a little bit about why tourism helps economic development. Tourism is economic development's first date. According to Longwoods International Research, which they call their halo affected tourism, tourism attracts new residents, tourism helps attract strong workforce, and tourism helps attract new development. What happens when more visitors come to town? The perception of the community is enhanced. There's a hundred and forty-six percent increase in people seeing the destination as a good place to live when seeing a destination marketing organization's advertising, and then visiting the destination after. The community attracts a strong workforce. There's a six, a hundred and sixty-three percent increase in people seeing the destination as a good place to start a career when seeing a destination marketing organization's advertising, and then visiting the destination after. New businesses are attracted. Research shows a hundred and ninety-four percent increase in people seeing the destination as a good place to start a business when seeing a destination marketing organization's advertising, and then visiting the destination after. What happens when visitors come to town? This is the spending by sector. Traveling spending by sector shows that when a visitor does come to town, businesses outside of hotel benefit the most. Seventy-nine percent of visitor's spending is on quote-unquote Main Street, and twenty-one percent is on lodging. Without a healthy tourism economy, many of our businesses in the area would suffer. This is the Twin Cities Metro visitor profile. Average household income of eighty thousand for the visitors. Seventy-two percent are married. Seventy-one percent come for leisure purposes, which Shakopee, we have a lot of, and fifty percent are day trippers. The Twin Cities Metro profile is a good starting point to determine who is traveling to Shakopee. We say, consider this a useful guide, but also work with research we get from vendors to help create the best traveler profile possible. More about our visitors. Three out of four visitors to the metro area are from Minnesota, Iowa, Wisconsin, or the Dakotas, with forty-seven percent being from Minnesota. Illinois and Manitoba are also key markets for us. We also market in areas such as Omaha, St. Louis, and Kansas City, which follows in line with what Explore Minnesota Tourism does. Our two thousand seventeen marketing recap, we had a continued shift away from traditional marketing efforts, which would include print and radio, towards more social media and digital marketing. Some of the traditional forms of media still hold value for organizations. Our belief is that as a destination marketing organization, we want to tell a full story, which one print ad may not do. We started an emphasis on paid search to help with conversions. Our website, visitshakopee.org, has the visitor guide on it, but we can also sell hotel rooms, we can sell Valley Fair tickets, attractions, packages, et cetera. And we feel if we can control the keyword searches and the keyword buys for somebody looking for, let's say, hotels near Valley Fair, hotels near one of our attractions, our restaurants, things like that, we can control that keyword and maybe pull them from a neighboring community such as Chanhassen, Eden Prairie, et cetera. So they come, stay in our area, go to our attractions, eat at our restaurants, shop at our shops, et cetera. Continued use of content, which blogging, to help draw attention, or, excuse me, attention for activities, dining, shopping, and lodging in Shakopee. With the use of content creation and distribution, we can market big to small. We can use our large venues and attractions, but also hit on unique shopping, dining, and events in the same article. This file is our flow chart for our marketing campaign for Visit Shakopee. It is in your packet. You can take a look at it. You can see what we ran, where we ran it, and when we ran it for two thousand and seventeen. This is some of our sample creative. We have a video series called the Get to Know You Video Series, where we try to focus on some of the smaller businesses. We will build that out through two thousand and eighteen. The video below, that is some of our pre-roll that we run with our YouTube channels and other mediums. The middle is content that we run. That's our blogs and different things like that, where we try to push the things to do, places to shop, different things. And then that is a print ad on the end that we do as a cooperative with Minnesota Getaways. These are the website analytics for two thousand and seventeen, and this is through October. In two thousand and sixteen, the Shakopee Chamber of Visitors CBB launched a new website for destination marketing. The purpose of this was to give the end user a better overall experience, make it easier to market individual venues, and able to, and be able to create enough content to help drive organic search for Shakopee and our tourism partners. Just some of the growth from our website. Through October of this year, we saw a thirty-six point eight five percent increase in sessions versus two thousand and sixteen, and a four hundred and forty percent, forty-seven percent growth in sessions versus two thousand and fifteen. Users to the visitshakopee.org website through October, we saw an increase of thirty-seven point five eight percent in users versus two thousand and sixteen, and a four hundred and thirty-nine percent increase versus two thousand and fifteen.
Counselor Luce?
Question, what's the difference between the sessions and users?
Sessions are the number of times that a person goes to the website. The users are the actual individuals, so sessions would bump up a little more. It's kind of...
What was that now? The session is when somebody goes to the website and does what?
Just, that's the number of sessions to the website. The users can be one individual, or it can be multiple times, oops, excuse me, somebody that's going multiple times to that, so that's the user. The sessions is just the individual, or the number of total visits to the website, probably the best way to put it.
I guess I don't understand. If the sessions is a total number of visitors to the website...
You have repeat users going to the website?
I could go on five times, that'd be five sessions, one user.
Okay, and then the users would be breaking it out and saying you're one instead of five?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's tracked.
All right.
Counselor Luce?
No, I was just trying to clarify.
And page views. Through October, we saw an increase of thirty-two point five percent in page views versus two thousand and sixteen, and an increase of four hundred and forty-nine percent versus two thousand and fifteen.
They're counting every page I look at, right?
That's counting every page.
It goes there, one, I'm a session or a user, but then if I click on one more page in there, and then I make a mischart.
Correct. That's the page views.
Got it.
And channels. The increase in organic traffic has helped the substantial growth in overall website traffic. We have a hundred and forty-five percent increase in organic traffic versus two thousand and sixteen, and a six hundred and twenty percent increase versus two thousand and fifteen. We'll continue to populate our website with content, events, et cetera, to help keep it as a go-to source for potential travelers to the area. The reason I bring up organic traffic is that's free for us. That's where our keywords and our pop, you know, populating with content, everything's like that. That's where that helps. That's where the user, that's looking for things to do in Shakopee, places to stay in Shakopee, places to eat in Shakopee, et cetera. Where we pop up, our website pops up in that organic search, so that's...
Counselor Luce?
By what I'm gathering from what you're saying is, your, your business is following e-commerce the same way as the brick and mortar and e-commerce are changing. Your business is changing also. You don't do hard copies anymore. Everything's going on the internet.
Yes and no. We still have a visitor's guide that we distribute. This year, we will print around twenty thousand copies of that for, well, we did print twenty thousand copies of that for two thousand and seventeen, and we will do probably close to the same for two thousand and eighteen. The visitor's guide goes to, um, the rest areas and travel information centers located throughout, coming into the state of Minnesota, so St. Croix, Moorhead, et cetera. Um, we also have it at Mall of America, and in the past we've had it at the airport. So that's our print piece, we'll do a few print ads here and there as part of cooperatives and lead generation for the opportunity to get leads for people and send out that guide to try to bring more travelers to the area. But otherwise, yes, we are going heavy digital. Um, it gives us an opportunity to, with some of our content pieces and different things, to write about fifteen great activity, summer activities in the Shakopee area. Well, we can talk about our main attractions, we can talk about Valley Fair, we can talk about Canterbury Park, we can talk about the Renaissance Festival. But then we can hit on, um, to the smaller events, the community events, the city events, different things like that. Or if it's talking about things to do outside of the attractions, going downtown Shakopee, going to the South Bridge, eating, dining, shopping, et cetera.
Counselor Williams?
You talked about the visitor guide and I always, when I'm out traveling, I look for it and I don't always see it there. Is there a cost when you put it somewhere to distribute?
Not through the state of Minnesota. So when it's going to the travel information centers, and thank you for letting me know it's not there, it's supposed to be out at the travel information centers. If there's one in particular that you went to and you did not see it, please let me know. Um, that is free through Explore Minnesota Tourism, the state handles those.
I like to see people getting the opportunity to come to Shakopee, so, uh, maybe they've taken them all.
Uh, that works too. This is our Facebook analytics page. Um, you can see that we've in, excuse me. Our organization has worked over the past few years to create more traction through our social media channels. Our largest medium for social media is Facebook. Since two thousand and fourteen, we have grown this medium by four thousand three hundred and sixty five percent. We will continue to use this channel to market Shakopee attractions, venues, and events. And to play off of what we've done with our video and the growth of video, I just put out a simple stats or charts of what we've been doing with our YouTube page, so you can see the watch time minutes and the views of our Shakopee Chamber channel.
Is that the Elliot and Abby Show?
That's Facebook Live on the downtown. I would do Facebook Live, but I'm not as, I'm not as good as Elliot at doing that, so. Onto our lodging tax recap, and the number for two thousand and seventeen is actually through September. So that is not up to date with the annual that you see with the rest of them. Our lodging tax has grown steadily since two thousand and ten. We are starting to see some dips in the overall lodging tax during certain months through two thousand and seventeen though. One of the things we attribute this to is there are a number of new hotels and the twins, hotel rooms in the Twin Cities metro area. We're in a very competitive market, and then in a time when online reviews reign supreme, we have limited options on competitive, limited service properties compared to some of our neighbor cities and communities.
You know, Tim, some of our hotels have got some different reputations and, and, uh, I don't want to elaborate too much on that. But do you think that costs us when people go on and look at these reviews?
I do, um. As a destination marketing person, I watch TripAdvisor frequently. I look at TripAdvisor to see the reviews that are made for our properties and then properties in other cities. Um, some of them aren't the best for some of our properties, some of the reviews that are left and some of the complaints that are left and different things like that. We do have some great properties in our area, um, and I think just.
I'm just thinking maybe the council should be doing something to try and improve, uh, some of those health, health issues.
The, the public health issues, and I think actually one major hotel was closed for a period of time of being renovated or changing ownership and trying to regroup, so, um. Counselor Lehman?
I think, uh, the diversity of hotel options isn't unique to Shakopee. Um, I travel too sometimes and I, you, you, whether, wherever you go, you have a range of offerings, whether it's your high-end luxury or your economy, and they both play a, a, a portion of the market or they, they serve a purpose in the market. The question I have for the occupancy sheet is the occupancy, hotel occupancy that you're showing here, is this specifically coming from outside or does this also show from within? So.
Room, room rental, whether it's internal from inside Shakopee or.
Or is it people coming from the outside? Do you know if that's broke down?
I don't, I would have to get the zip codes from the properties themselves to see the distribution of how it is. But it's basically what it is, is anyone that books a hotel room in Shakopee.
Okay, so it's both.
It could be a local person booking for some reason, but most of that is going to be the travel, somebody coming from outside of.
Yeah, it's probably, probably, but it's, it's all of it combined.
It's all combined.
Okay.
And our average daily rate. Our average daily rate was actually up through two, August two thousand and seventeen compared to two thousand and sixteen. We feel this shows a healthy marketplace for room nights in the Twin Cities metro area and is comparable to statistics from other communities throughout the metro. We also see this as an opportunity with an increase of new or refurbished hotel rooms in Shakopee, which we have, we do talk to properties. Um, there are some of them that have told us that they are looking at renovation, um, redoing and, and different things like that, so. The two thousand and eighteen strategic landscape for Shakopee, like I had mentioned earlier, we are seeing twenty two point two percent more hotel rooms in the metro area compared to two thousand and seventeen. Um, visitation to the metro area is, can, does continue to increase. We get these statistics from Meet Minneapolis, they do a visitor profile study every year. Uh, competition for the travel dollar is fierce. The metro area alone has twenty plus convention and visitors bureaus in it with the talk of more to come. And we're all competing for the same visitor, need to continue to stay relevant in a crowded marketplace. Some of the strategic objectives for our organization, we're going to continue to focus on leisure. That is our bread and butter for this, for Shakopee and the surrounding area with the great attractions that we do have. We also want to start focusing more on sports and groups. An example of that, in the two thousand and eighteen budget, we are budgeted to go to two national sports shows. Uh, one of them will be in April and two, uh, two thousand and eighteen in Minneapolis called the National Association of Sports Commissions. That is where we meet with rights holders and event directors to try to work with them to bring some of those events to Shakopee. With some of the new facilities that are coming online in Shakopee and then some of the facilities that we already have and different things. We can work with these organizations to try to bring some new events to the area.
I think for this slide, we were just talking about the EBA and our downtown and trying to leverage that. We have, uh, you know, a two million dollar infrastructure improvement, um, some new signage, uh, some new history back in our community too, and, uh, usually when I go to a visitors bureau, when I travel, um, I pull these up and order their books and learn all about it. Uh, you know, with the initiative Main Street Shakopee with their, uh, activities last summer, uh, we should be adding downtown to this slide here, um, in trying to gather, uh, people that come to our community and, and as a reason too, and try to add to that holding power or stickiness that, uh, that they would want to come. Um, I know what your focus is, is, but, uh, I think we have a, a downtown that's alive.
Definitely, and it's a great selling point for what we do as an organization. Uh, we don't have a specific downtownshakopee.org page, but that's because Elliot has his downtownshakopee.org, dot org website, which we link to in visitshakopee.org. But also we have all the area businesses in downtown. We have Bill's Togery and, and Shelley's Boutique, et cetera, down that list built out in our website. But to specifically go to downtown, that's what's nice about having content creative opportunity with the articles that we run through digital marketing is we can talk about, go to Valley Fair, stay in one of our hotels. But when you're in the hotel room that evening and you're looking for something to do, we've got this vibrant, growing downtown area to come to and have fun.
We've got a couple of former amateur photographers that kind of sell some of those events for your downtown slides and things like that too. Um, there's also a state amateur, is it baseball or softball? Baseball tournament this year, I'm sure that's going to sell some hotel rooms and those kind of events, I think is what you're talking about with the sports kind of.
Definitely, that is what we're looking at doing, um, working with some of those rights holders at the national level, whether it's USA Hockey, USA Baseball, USA Wrestling, et cetera, especially USA Wrestling when you're looking at the new field house that's going at the high school. Those types of opportunities are starting to come up and then we can just bring those bits back, work with the city and the local commu- or Park and Rec, um, now high school, et cetera, to try to fit those ven- fit those events into these venues, which would help grow the hotels and then just help grow economic impact for the community as a whole.
Counselor Lehman?
One of the things that I popped to mind is a trip that we took to Deadwood, South Dakota. And, and the reason I bring it up is, and it's probably hard to do at this point, but it's something we need to be thinking about, I think. There you can go online today and look at what events they're having a, a ways out.
Yeah.
And, and plan yourself and, you know, you want to take the kids to the old Wild West gunfight in the street or whatever. You know, with the tickets are the old fashioned train rides and things. Um, but they're, they've, we need to get a, you know, a, a list in advance of events for downtown that can be put out there with days, times, and, or, or within the community. A- and, uh, you know, like some of these other folks are doing that, and I don't know if it's even little, small, simple things that can be replicated over and over again where it's in the, it becomes an attraction. One of the things that pops to mind is these tours of rar molting. Okay? Uh, if, if people are traveling and they have never seen that type of operation and it's something they, they can look at a schedule and say, I can go at two or we can go at seven, it's ten bucks or whatever, and it's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. They know and they, they put it into their itinerary and it.
I think one of the good things about the visitshakopee.org website is we do have an events calendar, which we try to populate as far out as we can with opening dates of things like, once we get, we know, now we know rhythm on the rails for two thousand and eighteen, we can put that into the events calendar. Uh, what you talked about with tours at what would be maybe considered non-normal or attractions.
Right.
Um, there's opportunities there with the expanded profile that we can build out.
That was just an example, I'm not saying.
Oh, definitely, but, um, it's something that we can build out. That's where we, that's why we put the money towards a new website that we put towards is for that purpose of building those expanded profiles. We can build out a rar page with lists of their tours, um, looking documents and different things like that, so.
Thinking.
Tim, I have a, a question, so. How many visitors, you count hotel rooms, is that one of your biggest counters that you have?
Yes, just because of the.
If I said, how many visitors come to Shakopee on a given year?
We can say regionally ten million.
I've heard that number.
Yes.
And then, you know, and I, and you know, the four major events and I, uh, recreational activities, uh, I get that, but then I'm trying to go just a little dial down one notch at least, uh, Shakopee specific, even though a couple of those major attractions are here in town. Um, always trying to get a handle on what portion is of that ten million.
It would be difficult to get an exact number without, we could ballpark it based off of numbers that we can get from um, revenues that we receive through the state and, or revenue numbers that we receive through the state of Minnesota. We have economic calendar or calculators that we could, that we can show for like events and different things like that. If there's a soccer tournament coming to town, we can ballpark the economic impact of that event. We could kind of pull that backwards and do the same thing to along those lines. But to get an exact number is difficult. And I used to work in Mall of America and we would say every year it was forty million visitors. Well, every year it was forty million visitors, that's what we told people.
I always look at it, you know, trying to get, I know that our community gets a lot of day trippers and try to get them to stick a little bit one night and tie something else into it, you know, whether it's a trip to the, to Canterbury or, uh, to Valley Fair and then get a night out of it and then maybe they go downtown or maybe they do Canterbury and Valley Fair or something. But, uh, how to get them, and I was looking at the analytics and I'm on, I'm on my couch looking at your website and then I click off, you know, get, I want them to get off the couch and come, right? And stay, so.
That's the goal.
The whole idea, right? Counselor Lewis?
Well, just a suggestion off of what you just said, and I'm just curious if this has been tried to where you would take Canterbury Park and Valley Fair and do a combined ticket where they could get into both facilities under one ticket.
That has definitely been a discussion, um, and it's an ongoing discussion. It would definitely be something that we would like to do. Uh, one example of that, with the purpose of what we did with the website, we are using a third-party travel service called Ares Travel. That's where we can book the hotels and that's where they could book a hotel and purchase Valley Fair tickets. The eventual goal is to get Renaissance Festival in there, to get Canterbury Park in there, and then any other attractions that they can work with this national organization to get the ticket in there, so people can build out that entire, that whole itinerary, purchase the tickets all in one website, and then the goal of it is being able to book only a Shakopee hotel. And that's where we try to use those keywords to get them into our website because only Shakopee hotels are listed in there, so.
Counselor Williams?
I think, uh, River South would be, they've, they're already talking together, so that'd be a good combination to, to work with. And I wonder, as far as the attendance, could you get some of the attendance, uh, from the Canibaries and the, and the Valley Fairs and kind of ballpark figure out who's in Shakopee for these events, I guess, but they may come more than once or, uh, but that might help.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, one of the unique situations Shakopee is in is that we have this large population that's moving through us, not necessarily stopping the transportation piece, where they might be coming from Bell Plain, going to the cities or whatever. So we've got a large population that's going back and forth, and we can't gauge what portion of that population is actually coming from the outside, doing something here and then leaving, because they're mixed into that transit, population of transportation. But I say it's unique because not only do we have our, our transportation needs for our, our own residents and businesses, but what we have the transp- transportation needs from the outside coming here for something through you, and we have the other transportation piece of those going through, which makes us kind of a major transportation-driven location. And it's unfortunate that, you know, the last major piece that was built in ninety six has not expanded at all when the population has grown substantially since ninety six. And specifically, there, as we all know, the river crossing capacity, um.
You'd think for fifty million or ten million visitors, along with the transient people that move through and et cetera, that would have a.
Well, and the population would grow.
Counselor Lewis? Well, using one of Darren's financial terms, it's just, we're a pass-through. We need, we need to get them to stop.
Right.
We got to put a couple of stop signs out there and get them interested.
Well, we do get ten million.
We do.
That's a pretty big number, and of that million, we need more in Shakopee.
And we work, we have some great attractions.
Reasons to, give them reasons to stay. I want to go back, Tim, on the overall, um, tax for a hotel room, that was down a lot for this year. Um, and I, as I mentioned, I think one major hotel was shut down et cetera. Um, how, how was that number generated? Maybe this is a question for Darren, uh, uh, they just are collecting that tax and then sending it to us and then we send it to the, uh, visitors bureau?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, that is correct, but I believe that chart only went through, uh, September or October?
September, correct.
September, so the twenty seventeen numbers were only through September, so in comparison to the complete years for the prior years.
We were going by the monthlies, uh, some of the months were down, uh, our summer was actually down. Um, our winter, January, February were up, I believe March was down a little bit, but pretty stagnant. And then we had a couple of up months and then, um, once we got into the summer travel season, actually, that's when we had the down months.
Is there any, uh, uh, cultural vocal?
Do you have any concerns with the, the Minwac and Sue's new hotel coming online in January that might affect us?
No, there's actually, if we have enough hotel rooms and enough operating hotel rooms in the area, that actually is a benefit compression-wise, um, especially with the groups and events that they are going to be bringing to the new hotel, that gives us opportunity. Not everyone's going to be able to stay there, not everyone's going to want to pay to stay there. So that's where our Holiday Inns and our Hamptons come into play. It's, it's an actually an opportunity for compression.
Mayor.
Counsel.
I'm looking at the occupancy chart and it, it would look to me that the twenty seventeen occupancy is almost down almost every month compared to past years. Um.
Up.
Yellow is twenty seventeen. It's down from twenty sixteen in February. Almost equal for March, down in April, down in May, down in June, down in July, down in August. So that's telling you where your tax revenue loss is.
No, I know, but I, you know, who, I, I look at this and go, I just, I'm wondering, who's in, who's purview is it to, to look at the books on the hotels or if it's, who audits that or how does that really work? Are we getting, uh, good value for that tax that's imposed on a hotel room? Are we getting, uh, good value for that tax that's imposed on a hotel room locally? Mr. Reynolds?
I need to clarify what I, how I'm reading this, because one of the deceptions in here is that the actual room usage may be down, but we also have more rooms than we did. Because we've added hotel capacity.
Not since two thousand and ten, correct?
Yeah. Not since ten, but I was comparing it to twenty sixteen, twenty, twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, which is shown in your chart here.
I thought we had it since two thousand and ten.
Oh, Mr. Reynolds?
We.
Can you add to this?
We added to one hundred, one sixty-nine out there.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, you know, as we were looking at this, um, you know, we saw that the website analytics are up, the daily rate is up, and then the occup- occupancy, occupancy is down. That doesn't all, they're not always hand in hand, but it does cause, uh, a, a person to kind of wonder why that is, and, uh, you know, we do have a responsibility to ensure that this tax is ac- accurately and adequately collected, uh, on behalf of the C V B. And, uh, you know, we may wanna look at, uh, uh, in partnership with the C V B, uh, uh, doing an audit of, uh, of the returns that come in, and I don't think we've ever done that. I know that, you know, when cities do, uh, you know, it does have an impact normally on what your receipts are.
It just looked like for me on the revenue line that it had made some nice progressions here, and, uh, like I said, I, I don't, I apologize if we've added a new hotel, but, uh, it's been a while. And then I look at two thousand and seventeen and go, I think that was a pretty good year. Um, not too hot, not too cold, um, what went into that, and of course, that can be a lot of factors, I understand that, but Counselor Lewis?
Uh, there's questions for Mr. Reynolds, he, he's dealt with it, uh, what is the cost of doing an audit? Is this a spot audit, or do we audit everything?
No, audits generally will, will take a look at, um, I guess what you would call a spot audit, and, uh, I don't know what it would cost, but certainly, uh, I think that we could probably, um, work with the C V B to, uh, partner in, in, in doing that. And, um, it benefits both of our organizations to do that, and, uh, one, from our perspective, just keeping everything, you know, we can then say, yes, we've looked at it, and this is what it is. Uh, and then from their perspective, obviously, if, if it does have an impact for the positive, then it certainly is benefiting them.
Counselor Lewis?
I would go with, uh, directing staff to look into that and come back with some numbers, if we could.
Well, I think actually it would be staff and the chamber, C V B, getting together and having a discussion to see, A, if they wanna do it, B, how it would be partnered and structured, and what, what the goal, the end result would be, what, what they're actually looking to, to accomplish.
Okay.
Then we can certainly do that, and, uh, I'll come back before council and.
Okay. Other questions?
Other questions?
Counselor, are you waiting?
Uh, is your, is the visitor bureau open on Saturday?
Not the office, no, not the.
Is, when people come to town on the weekend, I, I, when I go to other towns, I stop by their visitor bureau, and it's usually a Saturday, and they're always open, and I didn't think ours was. And I just was curious about that and wondered if, if we're missing something there.
We do put information out, we have a little kind of kiosk that's outside the building where we'll put travel information, our visitor's guide, and other things for weekend.
You know, you're trying to direct people, hey, go down to the new brewery or this or that, but I, I, I just a thought, I don't know what the budget looks like for that, but, uh, thought it'd be a good idea.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, before we close, I'd, uh, like to say thank you to the chamber for a fantastic Friday night. That was, uh, one of the, if not the, best event I've seen downtown, uh, more people than I can imagine. I mean, it was wall-to-wall, uh, shoulder to shoulder, and, uh, I had a fantastic time just watching the little kids when they were watching the parade. I mean, when the dancers went through in their fairy costumes and their, uh, um, ballerina costumes, the little girls, their eyes light up, and, you know, you could just see that they, they wanted to be out there with them, they, you know, their, their imaginations were running wild. And, uh, as an adult, just sitting there and watching the kids, um, number one, it's for kids, and number two, it was fantastic watching the kids, so we all benefit, so thank you very much.
The weather sure helped, I gotta say. We had a great weather night.
I would echo that, but I would, uh, I was gonna talk to Elliot about this, I would suggest just one Santa Claus.
Okay. And if you, if you, I may, I would like to show us, uh, show you, we have a two thousand and eighteen video that we actually just received.
Oh, sure.
Give me one second, I'm gonna turn up the volume.
Gee, I told the grandkid, the one that can winkle his, wrinkle his nose and, and go places is the one you'll wanna stick with.
The best that, what a community has to offer is one example of last Friday night. Nice.
Great job.
So that'll be our two thousand and eighteen awareness video, we'll break that down into thirty-second, forty-five-second, fifteen seconds, and s- and then do some other little videos, and then run that, that'll go into the pre-rolls, and maybe we'll get on some apps and different.
You only get the eyeballs for a little while.
Definitely, so.
That's very good, was that new?
That is new, we just got the, this version yesterday.
Oh.
From the, from the.
Fantastic.
That's great.
Other questions?
Just one more, I was looking at your profit and loss statement, and, uh, just curious, what is the, uh, Orange One Forty-two, is that?
That's our digital marketing company or vendor that we work with, um, they're the ones that handle some of our emails, some of our content creative, so distribution of content creative, uh, some of our search, so some of that paid search that we talked about, different things like that. They're just a vendor that we use, uh, they work with Explore Minnesota Tourism, they actually are part of that, the co-op program for marketing for tour, uh, Explore Minnesota Tourism, so, uh, it's nice to work with some of the vendors that the state works with, because we can get some price breaks and different things, so.
Okay.
They're our largest vendor, that's probably where those numbers come in.
I, I popped out, yeah.
I see, uh, I have a question, just, uh, uh, you know, your two thousand and eighteen budget, running a little deficit there. Um, sounds like you're putting all, putting it all on the table here for a great two thousand and eighteen, any comment on that?
Definitely, um, we do have the money in the reserves, and that's nice, that we're able to spend some of those reserves down for two thousand and eighteen and still say, stay financially stable, we will have money in the reserves after that. Um, we're hoping, of course, that we won't have to spend down some of those reserves, our savings, um, and that we're gonna catch up in lodging tax to where we expected to be, so.
My last question is, uh, I think, uh, here, uh, um, I think in, next, this Friday at scale, the law enforcement's gonna put on a presentation about, uh, Super Bowl preparedness. And we're having a major event in the metro area, uh, we're hoping to capture some of that here locally, do you guys have plans to boost marketing that for that?
It's difficult to boost marketing specifically for the event itself, um, one of the reasons is we don't know who's gonna be playing in the game yet, um. It would be. From a tourism side, the home team, but from my side, I want the home team to be in it, but anyway, outside of that, um, we don't know who's coming to the game yet. We don't, the issue, other issues that come up is so many of those seats are corporate, so many of those, the people that are coming into town are gonna be in the downtown. What we look at it as, is we're gonna have our best February probably ever because of the compression issue from the metro area. Uh, my previous job, I was working when the Super Bowl was awarded to Minneapolis, we, we were working in the Northwest Metro on the hotel contract side of it. And at that time, when I had left, I believe the NFL had contracted twenty-two thousand rooms just for themselves. So that isn't including the fans, that's not including a lot of the media and different things like that, so the compression of that alone is going to be, it's gonna be big for Shakopee. And then Club Nomadic at Mystic Lake is going to be very big for us too, so I, it's just difficult to.
Well, I think, uh, two thousand and eighteen is setting up pretty good, starting with the, hopefully with the Super Bowl, uh, we're having the big baseball tournament, uh, um, I know that Canterbury has proposed a, a longer race season for themselves, which is awesome. Um, a lot of good things happening here in our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, thank you very much.
Don't forget the community center pool and some of your shots, too.
Do you have that going in the visitor guide, and it'll be on the website too, we've got some new photos from Kristen, so we're good to go.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much, or Counselor Lewis?
Uh, no, I'm done with that, I'm, uh, ten-minute recess.
Second.
Okay. Take a ten-minute recess, uh, motion and second, further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carriers will stand in recess. Those opposed, motion carriers will stand in recess. The City of Shakopee City Council meeting for December fifth, two thousand seventeen. Happy holidays. And we are on ten B one, the two thousand eighteen budget and property tax levy public meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
And staff will present Darren, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, as the mayor mentioned, this is our twenty eighteen budget and property tax public meeting. Uh, this is where the opportunity where the public's gonna get a chance to talk, um, to us or inquire about our, our property tax levy and our budget if they so do desire. Each year, the City of Shakopee annually adopts a budget and property tax levy for the upcoming year. Tonight is the public meeting where the public has that opportunity to comment on the budget and levy. So, how did we get to this point? Budget process is a long process. It starts probably back about April last year. So, we start kind of looking at the CIP projects a little bit. We actually had, uh, two public meetings, um, that Mr. Reynolds and I, um, set up at towards the end of May this year. Uh, we held, held one at the fire station and one at the library. Um, attendance wasn't great, but we're there to try get people engaged in the bu- budget on the front end versus... The required meeting that we have tonight is a statutory requirement, but it's towards the end of the budget process. There, it's tough to change things at this point in time of the budget process. So, looking at the budget process on the front end of getting insight and input on what are priorities? What are, what are things that the public are thinking about is kind of what we were looking to get on that. Um, and I assume that we're gonna keep on doing that, hoping to explore different avenues to try to get more public input on that. But, that's where we're at, at that point in time. From there, we, we began working on the CIP as well. Uh, we put together a standalone CIP this year. That was for the twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two projects. Uh, we had a council work session in July specifically on the CIP. Then, from there, staff began working on the operational budget. We began looking at our budget impact issues, looking at our tax levy, um, and brought forward a preliminary levy and budget to council at a work session on August twenty-ninth. And from there, the council, uh, approved a preliminary levy and a budget on September nineteenth. And they also approved the CIP that same evening. And then, two weeks ago, um, since that time, staff has then worked on the details of the, of the budget, putting together a proposed budget for twenty eighteen. Um, and then the, the council reviewed that at a work session back on November twenty-first. So, as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, two weeks ago, um, the city really only has the ability to affect the things that are in our, in our box. And basically, what's in our box is our city budget and our levy. We don't have the ability to address valuation or any other taxing districts taxes, for instance, a school, county, or those, um, special taxing districts that you see in your truth and taxation statement. This year's the final year of a three-year transformational pros- budget process that sets the stage to achieve the council's ultimate goal, goals of low taxes, continued financial stability, and a stable tax rate. This new foundation will help keep the goals in place for the foreseeable future. From an administration standpoint, the budget continues to be retooled in order to achieve, uh, true fiscal transparency. Um, that's including defining our revenues, um, like we did tonight with the EDA levy on that end of it. Making that clear and concise and showing exactly where those dollars are coming from and where they're going to. Looking at our tax abatement levies, breaking that out in the, within the city part of that. Um, and kind of eliminating a lot of those transfers that we would put into one pocket and then transfer out to various other funds. We're making it more, um, transparent and actually where those dollars are coming from now. And also to ensure that our budgets are accurately, accurately reflect how we spend our tax dollars, we're really cutting down on, on those budget variances. In the past, we've had some pretty significant, um, positive variances at year end, where we've had an extra, you know, million or million and a half dollars or so. Um, we're eliminating that because we're, that's really, if we're over-budgeting that way on the revenues, um, that's really a tax increase that isn't necessary at that point in time. Uh, with that caveat is that we would come back to council if we come into a budget situation where we're, we don't necessarily have budget or we have an unforeseen circumstance arise. And we would come to the council to, uh, request dollars or to talk about that situation at hand. So, for the second consecutive year, staff has proposed a budget with no impact to residents, absent any increases in property valuation. So, if your property valuation did not increase, you should not see an increase in your property taxes from the city's standpoint. The proposed budget decreases the city tax rate from thirty-eight point five to one percent to thirty-seven point one two percent. Um, just to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, adding that EDA levy that the council or that the commissioner approved tonight, um, adds some more percentage to that tax rate and brings that up about the thirty-seven point eight seven seven, which is still below, um, last year's rate. So, this budget is really tr- is really looking at, um, has a focus on rightsizing our organization. It really has a heavy focus on public safety. Um, it's requesting two additional police officers to focus on keeping our streets safe. It's requesting a code compliance officer to monitor health and safety. And in addition, and in addition to that, an assistant fire chief to focus on training in our fire forces. Um, in addition, um, planning and development is requesting a junior planner to ensure our growth is properly mapped for the future. And an economic development specialist that will focus on business retention. That'll be a position that's split between the city and the EDA as far as costs go. We do, do have budget impact issues, um, that we've been working on since this summer. Um, obviously, being a service organization that any city is, personnel is our biggest, one of our biggest drivers for an operational cost. We have the new positions that we've just talked about, um, cost of living increases. Uh, we have three unit contracts that settled contracts for twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen. Those call for a three percent colas each year, so there are costs there that, uh, we need to account for within our budget. We also had a cla- a class and comp study, um, done as well too, to ensure that our employee classifications are correct. And, uh, there was an additional cost of, as a result of that study of about thirty-five thousand dollars or so. In addition, we are restoring our internal service charges. These are our rents that we pay for our buildings, our equipment, and our park assets. Um, as we've discussed in the past, there was a twenty percent reduction back in twenty fourteen. This is the second year of restoring those rents, um, that does equate to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, cost to restore that final year of that, um, restoration. We're looking at energy costs. We, uh, in our monthly financial reviews, looking at the community center and ice arena, have noticed that our, our energy costs there for gas and electric are higher, are higher than what we anticipated. So, we do have additional, um, budget amounts within the, within the recreation budget for next year of about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars or so to, to cover those costs. Um, on the positive side of that, uh, revenues are higher, um, than what we anticipated as well too. So, we do have some offset of some of these expenditures with revenues. Um, building permits, they have been strong. We've been talking about that in our monthly financial reviews as well too. Uh, we're budgeting those at about a ten percent increase over, um, this twenty seventeen budget. Twenty seventeen actuals for building permits are, are way above that amount. Um, but still, we want to make sure that we don't necessarily know how the economy will go. Uh, we want to make sure we budget those on the conservative side of it, just not that ultra-conservative side that we've talked about in the past. And then in addition, community center memberships and, um, programming, community center memberships are expected to increase over to three hundred thousand dollars, um, next year from where they're at this year. And total community center revenues are up, gonna be up about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars is what we've projected. And we've done a lot of, spent a lot of time and effort in, in really looking at those memberships to make sure that we're, um, forecasting a realistic number that isn't, you know, pie in the sky hopes, but isn't, um, way down here as well too, something that we, we feel is, is fairly realistic. So, our levy request, uh, back in September was two point five eight percent or four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, uh, was a preliminary levy that was approved by the council in September. At that point, the EDA and the city council also approved a preliminary EDA levy of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Since that time, the city side of things, we've been able to reduce the levy down by about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, uh, bringing that levy increase down to one point seven seven percent. City of Shakopee's been very advantageous over the last couple of years of, of being able to see lots of, or a high amount of growth. Uh, this past year for, or this past year for pay seventeen taxes, I think we saw an eight percent growth rate. For pay eighteen taxes, our growth rate was about, was about eight and a half percent. And the nice thing about that growth rate is that a large percentage of it, twenty-five percent, is related to new growth. So, that's new construction coming into the city. So, if you have just growth, just value increases with no new growth, it doesn't really affect your tax liability. It affects your tax rate, but it doesn't affect the amount of dollars you actually pay, actually pay, excuse me. But if you have the new growth, that will actually lower your tax liability, all things being neutral. Um, for the City of Shakopee, actually, we, with the twenty-five percent growth, we could actually increase our levy two point five eight percent, uh, without having an impact on existing properties. That's given the caveat that all those property, other properties, the values stayed exactly the same. We just brought in the new growth, taxes, taxes would actually drop, uh, or remain stable if we increased our levy two point five eight percent, so.
Come in, uh, good evening again. The City of Shakopee City Council meeting for December fifth, two thousand seventeen. Happy holidays. And we are on ten B one, the two thousand eighteen budget and property tax levy public meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
And staff will present Darren, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, as the mayor mentioned, this is our twenty eighteen budget and property tax public meeting. Uh, this is where the opportunity where the public's gonna get a chance to talk, um, to us or inquire about our, our property tax levy and our budget if they so do desire. Each year, the City of Shakopee annually adopts a budget and property tax levy for the upcoming year. Tonight is the public meeting where the public has that opportunity to comment on the budget and levy. So, how did we get to this point? Budget process is a long process. It starts probably back about April last year. So, we started kind of looking at the CIP projects a little bit. We actually had, uh, two public meetings, um, that Mr. Reynolds and I, um, set up at towards the end of May this year. Uh, we held, held one at the fire station and one at the library. Um, attendance wasn't great, but we're there to try get people engaged in the bu- budget on the front end versus... The required meeting that we have tonight is a statutory requirement, but it's towards the end of the budget process. There, it's tough to change things at this point in time of the budget process. So, looking at the budget process on the front end of getting insight and input on what are priorities? What are, what are things that the public are thinking about is kind of what we were looking to get on that. Um, and I assume that we're gonna keep on doing that, hoping to explore different avenues to try to get more public input on that. But, that's where we're at, at that point in time. From there, we, we began working on the CIP as well. Uh, we put together a standalone CIP this year. That was for the twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two projects. Uh, we had a council work session in July specifically on the CIP. Then, from there, staff began working on the operational budget. We began looking at our budget impact issues, looking at our tax levy, um, and brought forward a preliminary levy and budget to council at a work session on Au- August twenty-ninth. And from there, the council, uh, approved a preliminary levy and a budget on September nineteenth. And they also approved the CIP that same evening. And then, two weeks ago, um, since that time, staff has then worked on the details of the, of the budget, putting together a proposed budget for twenty eighteen. Um, and then the, the council reviewed that at a work session back on November twenty-first. So, as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, two weeks ago, um, the city really only has the ability to defect the things that are in our, in our box. And basically, what's in our box is our city budget and our levy. We don't have the ability to address valuation or any other taxing districts taxes, for instance, a school, county, or those, um, special taxing districts that you see in your truth and taxation statement. This year's the final year of a three-year transformational pros- budget process that sets the stage to achieve the council's ultimate goal, goals of low taxes, continued financial stability, and a stable tax rate. This new foundation will help keep the goals in place for the foreseeable future. From an administration standpoint, the budget continues to be retooled in order to achieve, uh, true fiscal transparency. Um, that's including defining our revenues, um, like we did tonight with the EDA, uh, levy on that end of it. Making that clear and concise and showing exactly where those dollars are coming from and where they're going to. Looking at our tax abatement levies, breaking that out in the, within the city part of that. Um, and kind of eliminating a lot of those transfers that we would put into one pocket and then transfer out to various other funds. We're making it more, um, transparent and actually where those dollars are coming from now. And also to ensure that our budgets are accurately, accurately reflect how we spend our tax dollars, we're really cutting down on, on those budget variances. In the past, we've had some pretty significant, um, positive variances at year end, where we've had an extra, you know, million or million and a half dollars or so. Um, we're eliminating that because we're, that's really, if we're over-budgeting that way on the revenues, um, that's really a tax increase that isn't necessary at that point in time. Uh, with that caveat is that we would come back to council if we come into a budget situation where we're, we don't necessarily have budget or we have an unforeseen circumstance arise, that we would come to the council to, uh, request dollars or to talk about that situation at hand. So, for the second consecutive year, staff has proposed a budget with no impact to residents, absent any increases in property valuation. So, if your property valuation did not increase, you should not see an increase in your property taxes from the city's standpoint. The proposed budget decreases the city tax rate from thirty-eight point five to one percent to thirty-seven point one two percent. Um, just to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, adding that EDA levy that the council or that the commissioner approved tonight, um, adds some more percentage to that tax rate and brings that up about the thirty-seven point eight seven seven, which is still below, um, last year's rate. So, this budget is really tr- is really looking at, um, has a focus on rightsizing our organization. It really has a heavy focus on public safety. Um, it's requesting two additional police officers to focus on keeping our streets safe. It's requesting a code compliance officer to monitor health and safety. And in addition, and in addition to that, an assistant fire chief to focus on training in our fire forces. Um, in addition, um, planning and development is requesting a junior planner to ensure our growth is properly mapped for the future. And an economic development specialist that will focus on business retention. That'll be a position that's split between the city and the EDA as far as costs go. We do, do have budget impact issues, um, that we've been working on since this summer. Um, obviously, being a service organization that any city is, personnel is our biggest, one of our biggest drivers for an operational cost. We have the new positions that we've just talked about, um, cost of living increases. Uh, we have three unit contracts that settled contracts for twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen. Those call for a three percent colas each year, so there are costs there that, uh, we need to account for within our budget. We also had a cla- a class and comp study, um, done as well too, to ensure that our employee classifications are correct. And, uh, there was an additional cost of, as a result of that study of about thirty-five thousand dollars or so. In addition, we are restoring our internal service charges. These are our rents that we pay for our buildings, our equipment, and our park assets. Um, as we've discussed in the past, there was a twenty percent reduction back in twenty fourteen. This is the second year of restoring those rents, um, that does equate to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, cost to restore that final year of that, um, restoration. We're looking at energy costs. We, uh, in our monthly financial reviews, looking at the community center and ice arena, have noticed that our, our energy costs there for gas and electric are higher, are higher than what we anticipated. So, we do have additional, um, budget amounts within the, within the recreation budget for next year of about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars or so to, to cover those costs. Um, on the positive side of that, uh, revenues are higher, um, than what we anticipated as well too. So, we do have some offset of some of these expenditures with revenues. Um, building permits, they have been strong. We've been talking about that in our monthly financial reviews as well too. Uh, we're budgeting those at about a ten percent increase over, um, this twenty seventeen budget. Twenty seventeen actuals for building permits are, are way above that amount. Um, but still, we want to make sure that we don't necessarily know how the economy will go. Uh, we want to make sure we budget those on the conservative side of it, just not that ultra-conservative side that we've talked about in the past. And then in addition, community center memberships and, um, programming, community center memberships are expected to increase over to three hundred thousand dollars, um, next year from where they're at this year. And total community center revenues are up, gonna be up about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars is what we've projected. And we've done a lot of, spent a lot of time and effort in, in really looking at those memberships to make sure that we're, um, forecasting a realistic number that isn't, you know, pie in the sky hopes, but isn't, um, way down here as well too, something that we, we feel is, is fairly realistic. So, our levy request, uh, back in September was two point five eight percent or four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, uh, was a preliminary levy that was approved by the council in September. At that point, the EDA and the city council also approved a preliminary EDA levy of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Since that time, the city side of things, we've been able to reduce the levy down by about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, uh, bringing that levy increase down to one point seven seven percent. City of Shakopee's been very advantageous over the last couple of years of, of being able to see lots of, or a high amount of growth. Uh, this past year for, or this past year for pay seventeen taxes, I think we saw an eight percent growth rate. For pay eighteen taxes, our growth rate was about, was about eight and a half percent. And the nice thing about that growth rate is that a large percentage of it, twenty-five percent, is related to new growth. So, that's new construction coming into the city. So, if you have just growth, just value increases with no new growth, it doesn't really affect your tax liability. It affects your tax rate, but it doesn't affect the amount of dollars you actually pay, actually pay, excuse me. But if you have the new growth, that will actually lower your tax liability, all things being neutral. Um, for the City of Shakopee, actually, we, with the twenty-five percent growth, we could actually increase our levy two point five eight percent, uh, without having an impact on existing properties. That's given the caveat that all those property, other properties, the values stayed exactly the same. We just brought in the new growth, taxes, taxes would actually drop, uh, or remain stable if we increased our levy two point five eight percent, so. So, if we looked at a, um, kind of an average valued home within the City of Shakopee, um, and if all values stayed the same from last year, um, and that, that property did not increase or decrease in, in value, the levy would, um, that property would see about a thirty dollar decrease in the levy with a, a levy increase of one point seven seven percent. The EDA levy, which we want to make sure, since we're kind of one in the same or, or kind of six to one half dozen the other, we want to make sure that the EDA pieces compared in that as well is that, uh, we talked about that twenty dollar increase for the EDA. So, if you add that twenty dollars to that minus thirty dollars, you come out to a, a net of, of minus ten dollars. And that's again, if your value does not change. So, here's a chart of the, um, preliminary levy or kind of our, our levy for this year. It shows the twenty sixteen final, twenty seventeen final, the twenty eighteen proposed, which was the preliminary levy that the council approved in September, and then the twenty eighteen adjusted, which would be our, our final budget or final levy, uh, with the reduced amount on there. Couple items to note, uh, you can see the capital improvement fund towards the top there is decreasing a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We are receiving some additional, uh, municipal state aid dollars along with a small shift in, um, our maintenance versus construction dollars. We're able to, uh, move those tax levy dollars around without having an impact on the capital improvement fund. The abatement levies continue to be isolated. This practice was started last year, twenty seventeen, we started that, that practice. Um, in the prior years, those development or abatement levies had been included in the general fund. So, we needed the surplus within the general fund to be able to account for that because we hadn't accounted for the expenditure side of it, so. So, as you can see, this, um, levy, bottom line, it does include the EDA, uh, that's at three point six two percent. But if you go above that and look at just the city levy, we'd be at the one point seven seven percent change. So, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the, the city does not control the property valuations. Um, but understanding how property valuation changes, um, can help you understand your tax liability as well too. So, if your property valuation changes, it's gonna affect your taxes because it's gonna compare it to the, the whole system. So, from January first, twenty fifteen to January first, twenty sixteen, which is for taxes payable twenty seventeen, so it gets a little bit confusing. Those values were ve- were virtually flat for residential. They actually decreased about a half a percent, I believe. And then from valuations from January first, twenty sixteen to January first, twenty seventeen, um, which are for taxes payable now in twenty eighteen, those values are actually increasing, um, quite substantially. We have eighty percent of the homes within the city of Frith, or City of Shakopee, excuse me, um, are actually increasing between five and ten percent. So, that average valued home that was two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars last year is now two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. They saw about a six point one percent increase in that valuation. Um, so with that taxes payable twenty seventeen, there was basically a shift. That residential valuation stayed very flat. But there was a shift to the commercial side of it. We had an increase in valuation there. So, last year, we had a levy increase of what, seven point four seven percent, I believe it was? And that tax impact was virtually null for, um, residential properties because the, that shift in tax burden was taken on by the commercial industrial properties. So, now this year, with the commercial, with the residential, um, property seeing an increase in valuation, there's a shift back the other direction. So, uh, residential properties will see a little bit of that tax burden, given there's an increase, if there's an increase in their specific property. So, here's the graph that I tried to show a couple of weeks ago, and I don't know why it didn't show up then and it's showing up now. But this is, this is information from the county assessor's office, and it gives a, a listing of the ranges of values, um, for your taxes payable twenty seventeen and what homes within each of those specific ranges, um, are seen for an average increase in property valuations. Um, again, this is just averages among those, these classifications. I have the whole list of every city parcel in the, in the city, and within each of these ranges, it ranges from, it can be a negative a- amount to, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty percent, um, increase in valuation. And it's all dependent upon individual properties, even though we value the properties as a whole.
I look at this chart though a different way, and we talk about affordability in the, in the community. And, you know, over half of our homes in our community, number of units are at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less. And, uh, forty plus percent are at two hundred or less. That's a lot of housing stock there, uh, uh, of what I consider affordable housing.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, two fifty or two hundred, a lot of stock there, um, at that number out of eleven thousand nine hundred.
Absolutely. So, here again is a, uh, kind of the budget impact, and this takes into consideration the valuation change, uh, for three different valued, valued homes. And I did highlight a couple of areas here. I, this slide in our, our last presentation two weeks ago was a little bit blurry, so I took it out and redid it, and I forgot to update a couple of areas. And the highlighted areas are the areas I, I did not update. Uh, on the middle home, that actually is a thirty-four dollar tax increase, whereas in your agenda packet, it, it shows a tax decrease of thirty-four dollars. Um, again, but that's strictly given, uh, in that range, it's about a six point one percent increase in valuation for that averaged home. But there again, it's, it's always specific to your specific individual property. It can be higher or lower than that, that six point one, and that will affect the amount of taxes you're paying for, for next year. Uh, the home on the right, I did not update the valuation. I think the valuation had, was flat in the, in the agenda packet, and then it also showed a tax decrease, whereas this year, um, it is a tax increase of fourteen dollars for that, for that valued home. And really why that's fourteen dollar tax increase is less than the, the smaller valued home is that the, the valuation is going up less in a percentage compared to the smaller or the, the lesser valued home. So, here's the tax capacity and tax rate comparison. Um, these tax rates and tax capacities have somewhat an inverse relationship. Uh, tax rates, a tax rates, two main variables are the tax levy and the property valuation. So, as values increase, new value is added to the levy, and then that levy is spread, is spread across, um, the, the tax, the tax capacity. So, as you can see, when the housing values started to drop back in two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, we had less tax capacity, but we still needed the same amount of dollars that inversely relates that our tax rate needs to increase in order to gain that amount of tax dollars that we have. Now that we're, the values are appreciating again, in order to gain that same amount of tax dollars, we can actually have a smaller tax rate.
Tax capacity is a, that's what I look at a lot, is the tax capacity. It's one of the, one of the drivers that can help keep taxes low.
And here's a chart of our ten-year tax levy history. It just, it just shows the different types of ca- taxes, uh, where exactly it's going to and the, the levy change. And this does include the EDA and the... And this does include the EDA and the HRA respective levies from a, from several years ago. We had small levies in those out years, I'm not exactly sure which years, but they are included in this. So you can see last year, we had seven point four seven percent, and this year is three point six two, and there again, that does include the EDA piece of that. And averages out to about three point four percent over that ten years. It's a lot of ups and downs, but average is about three point four percent. And here is just another change comparison showing that each individual levies with our total levy. You see the total levies obviously increases gradually over time, and then individual levy changes from year to year on the orange line. And here is a, a chart with our comparable cities. It shows our preliminary levy increase. Shakopee is at the three point six two, that is actually the, the new proposed levy after the reduction that we were able to maneuver into the budget. The other cities, it is still their preliminary budget amounts or levy amounts. I don't have any updated numbers from them at this point, so obviously their levies can, they can't be higher than this, but they could be a little bit lower than this. And this is a comparison of twenty seventeen annual cost of services for comparable cities and some of our surrounding cities. I believe I showed you this chart last week. This includes Shakopee for both twenty eighteen and twenty seventeen. It includes the property taxes and your utility services, your sewer, your storm drainage, and your, and your water. And the reason that twenty, Shakopee twenty eighteen costs are actually lower than twenty seventeen, it's due to our tax rate. Our tax rate will be dropping now, and the median value that I used for this chart came from a different source than what I use for our other internal information. So it's a little bit different median value versus the, an average value type deal. Oh no, this one's going to be goofy. Well, I'm sorry on that. This is just a general fund summary of our revenues and expenditures. You can see. What's that? Hit go back. So this is showing our twenty fifteen actuals, twenty sixteen actual, and then the twenty seventeen budget, and then our twenty seventeen revised budget as well. We are including a twenty seventeen revised budget, which is.
Well, sorry. So people don't think we're trying to hide something there.
Or we're looking at great numbers. We actually have these in our packet, so.
We do, but.
Yep, I, I agree with you.
All right, there we go. Not the clearest, but they can give you a little better picture anyway. And so, as I was mentioning, this is our general fund budget, and it actually includes a revised budget as well too. Staff will be requesting, when council approves the twenty eighteen budget, that they approve a twenty seventeen revised budget as well. That will be included as our, kind of basically our final budget for twenty seventeen. The council, any variances that we have accounted for. I know one for certain is our building permit fees, our charges for services and such. We're increasing that, a few hundred thousand dollars there, and are actually anticipating a surplus of about four hundred thousand dollars on this budget. Actual amounts may come in actually a little bit higher since this was done mid-September, early October before, and our building permits have since been still strong on that end of it. So in all indicators, it should be a little bit higher than that actual year end. And we are requesting an approved or a, a balanced budget. You can see that the bottom right corner there, it is zero. So our expenditures plus our transfers in will equal our, our revenues on that end of it. It's the third option, I guess, sorry about that. This is just a breakdown of our general fund expenditures by department. This basically breaks down the, the actuals and revised budgets and twenty eighteen budget amongst our various departments. And this will, twenty-six million five ninety-five will equal the, the amount on the previous, on the previous slide page. So what are the next steps? This is obviously a public meeting. The public is welcome to speak tonight on the budget and/or the tax levy. After tonight's meeting, the, the budget and levy will come back to the council on the December nineteenth for final approval. We will include the EDA levy at that point as well too. And then for tonight, no action is actually, is required. This is just a public meeting for informational purposes only, so. With that, it'd be open to any questions you may have.
Questions of staff? Questions of staff? If not, this is a public meeting. If any resident citizen would like to come forward and make comment on their taxes?
Matt, you're up.
Matt? Councilor Lehman.
I don't have any specifics for this tax budget. I asked them all at the budget workshops, but I would, did want to share a little bit of history. We're all into history, right? Nineteen ninety-one, bought my house for seventy-five thousand dollars. The total taxes all combined was seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, one percent tax on the value. Insurance at the time was two fifty-eight, and that was cost of replacement guarantee insurance. Twenty seventeen, values one fifty, doubled. Taxes are up now a combined total, twenty-two hundred, one point five percent taxation. Insurance, twelve hundred.
Uh, homeowner's insurance?
Yep.
So, okay.
So the taxation on the property is, is one and a half percent to value, went up a little over three times compared to the value, compared to the one percent total taxation in ninety-one.
In sixteen years.
Yep. But what I'm pointing out is seventy-five thousand at seven fifty-eight.
Percentage of it all.
If you, if you doubled the value to one fifty and you doubled the taxes, it'd be fifteen hundred, not twenty-two hundred.
Right.
Which makes it one and a half percent total taxation instead of one percent. Now, just to be totally clear, the biggest portion of that increase is the school district.
Right.
And then you've got the special taxing districts that are chomping away at it, and you've got a couple of whatever, Met Council, mosquito people, and whoever else is in there. But just as a long-term trend, the trend would say that overall taxation is going up. Where the blame falls is anybody's argument, but on mine, it was mostly school. So it was a voter-proof referendum. The, I noticed in these slides that the lowest value homes seem to get hit the hardest, and I think Councilor Whiting pointed that out too. And that hurts the affordability of them houses. And I'm trying to figure out if it's, if they see the largest increase in valuations because the market is looking for that? And they're more valuable from the, from the market standpoint of, that's what people are looking for? Or, you know, I don't, I don't have the answer to that, because I'm not an assessor and I don't know what the trends are, but. Just thought I'd share some history.
I appreciate that. So my home went up eleven percent, and my taxes went up thirteen point two. Of course, the largest part of the increase wa, or sixty percent of my increase was due to the school district. However, I, I actually want to speak about what I perceive as value, and hopefully residents too. My city taxes are a little over a thousand dollars, divided by twelve months, ninety dollars, whatever the math is. I think I get a lot of value per month for that. Police, fire, great parks, a lot of free activities during the summer, the winter for our, for our families. I even look at. Snowplows for the winter? What time do they come by? I, I do think it's a lot of value, and I think that just for the city portion, I mean, how much do we put in our home telecommunication bill? Your cell phone cable bill, combined per month times twelve months? I know in our house, I'd pay that city tax every month on that compared to that, but I do think we get a lot of value. This, the, the tax levy, the percentage of the levy is the low, second lowest in six years. The tax rate is the second lowest in six years as well. And I think part of that is our tax capacity, if we can grow our tax capacity, or hopefully our tax rate can stay down. Because I, I look at it, and I'm not looking at it over sixteen years, but I'm looking at comparable of that ten-year chart. I really appreciate the ten-year chart, both on tax rate and tax capacity, so.
I gotta, there was a change from the mill rate to the tax rate.
Right.
And I think that was ninety-nine or two thousand, which kind of skewed things up on, on my long-term.
On how to, how to do the value, and I wasn't very good at mill rates, but Councilor Whiting?
We also are adding seven, was it seven new employees, I think it was, total? You know, heavily on the public safety side of it, so I, I think, you know, that's where a lot of that percentage is being, that increase is being tied up in a lot of those employees that we're bringing in, and the, the cost of the health insurance increase. So there's a lot of different factors, but I think we did a very good job with what we had to work with, and I want to thank staff for making this budget transparent. And Darren, I know you, Mr. Reynolds, you've taken this as a, as a target project, so thanks for doing that. And I think we got a lot to be proud of with keeping this down and transparent.
Councilor Lewis?
Well, I kind of enjoyed the comparison you did, and I think it would be real easy for a lot of people to read that. I'm just wondering if, if staff could make a little bit of a comparison on a couple of the different housing levels? And just show us what it costs us per month, like you said, your cell phone bill, your cable bill and all that.
Right.
Compared to what your taxes are. I mean, that would really bring it into perspective for people.
I think that, you know, what I hear, and when I talk to people, you know, they're looking at the bottom line, and they're, you know, as a homeowner, I look at the bottom line too. But as a member of this body, I control the line that I control, right? And then I go, how much value am I getting out of that line? And I just took my yearly tax, city tax month, divided by twelve, and go, how much you spend on, what do you get for that? What do you really get for that? Street lighting, plows, parks mode, police, outstanding police department, fire department. I look at all the activities around town that really technically are free to go to. Yeah, you might have to buy a, a hot dog or a potato chip or a soda, but for, I, I think there's value in our community. And for ninety dollars, whatever the math is, I think that's a great value per month.
One final thought, this is, you know, I've been around here for a few years, and this is the first time during the public portion that there's nobody here but, but us talking about our taxes here. So I think that ought to say something right there, that, you know, people see the value and understand it. I'm not sure the school board, you'll have to let us know, Councilor Lehman, how that works with their meeting, but I, I think they'll probably have a few people there.
I being one of them.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. You know, our finance staff and our department heads have done a tremendous job since I've been here, and kind of giving them some new challenges to look at. Having Darren on board has been tremendous as he's reshaped this budget. We're very fortunate to be in the situation that we're in. This is the strongest financial community I've ever worked in. I said that today when I gave a presentation to the St. Francis Board of Directors. And ultimately, what is really good about where we are in our structural analysis of this budget is our future. Now, I'm not going to say that we're going to lower taxes next year, but I am going to say that we're going to look hard at it because I think that there's a real opportunity here to do something that normally is not done by government based upon where we are today. So, you know, our budget cycle starts at the beginning of the year, and now Darren is over here sweating bullets because I've just said this in public, so.
Well, thank you, staff.
Structurally, we are in a great, great position.
Councilor Mokel?
You know, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I know when we did the search for you and brought you to this community, those are things that I saw, and as, with each new hire that we've made, I've watched that fall into place, and I really appreciate this budget. You know, it's been the fourth budget for me, and I've watched how we really have pulled together and, and made these changes, so I appreciate that.
Councilor Lehman?
Well, I'm really, I'm really actually happy with the general levy side of this budget. I think it's a pretty decent document, something to be pretty proud of. I like the layout, I like the transparency. You know, I like a lot about it, actually. But from the service side of it, the services that I don't want, I don't want the police services and I don't want the fire services. At least the negative contact type services. I don't want the fire.
If your house is on fire.
I don't want the fire, I don't want the, the ticket and whatever else. But realistically, I mean, these are services that you have to, you have to have because it's, it's kind of like the insurance that you pay for on your house or your car. You don't want to use it, but if you don't have it and you need it, you're in trouble. So, you know, you've just got to recognize that there are some city services, you know, you've got a whole building over there full of salt. If it doesn't snow, you don't need it, but boy, if you get what you just received overnight, this sheet of ice, now you need it. And when you need it, you need it, so. People had to recognize that there are services that cities and counties and everybody else provide that you don't necessarily see or use on a daily or even monthly basis, but they are necessary services that have to be there.
Okay, great. No further discussion, we'll see this back.
Mr. Mayor, there's a public meeting, so I don't know if you want to officially request if there's.
Different, different.
But I can do it again?
Oh, you did, I'm sorry, I may have missed it, so.
We have a, a bus out.
I may have missed it. I can go get him, I can go bring him in.
If anybody, would anybody like to, residents like to comment?
Sorry about that.
If not, thank you. We aren't going to take official action tonight, that will be taken on the nineteenth, December nineteenth here at City Hall to finalize our budget. So with that, great presentation, great work, thank you very much. Moving ahead, we had eleven A, the city bill list, and for your review. And then we have eleven B, liaison and administration report, Councilmember Lehman.
The, I had a visit, kind of a surprise visit actually, from somebody from the railroad group out of Washington DC. Spent a couple of hours with me, and gave me a great big giant pack of information that I forgot to bring here to give to Mr. Reynolds, but I will get it to him, and he can share it out. At least what's pertinent, because it's pretty thick. There's a discussion about legislation at the federal level, potentially for government control of private, privately operated rail lines. Currently, the way I understand it is you could have, you know, UP's line here, and somebody else's line here, and if a business wants to opt to go with this line instead of this line, and the government wants to be able to say, they're going to be able to use somebody else's private line, and that's not the way it currently is. Currently, they're privately owned, and this line works with this line and figures out how to get product from A to B. Kind of like using in the trucking industry or anybody else. Commissioner Beard stopped in, and the three of us were kind of talking about it, and then Mr. Beard left this gentleman with me to talk with for a couple of hours, so. Pros and cons both ways. I'm, I pretty much just listened, took the information, read it at my leisure, and like I say, I'm just going to turn it in to staff and let them read it and decipher if any of it relates to our rail and stuff, and staff can disseminate it out to the rest of you voters.
All right. I guess I had the, on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, the unveiling of Chief Shakopee. Our downtown infrastructure part and the donation from the Minnewakan Tribe, fantastic. A lot of wow's, I've even gotten called from around the metro area. People are. People are pretty impressed, we're putting history back into our community, I think that is great, um, great event. And Chief Shakopee is home and that's great, so. Also, I had a meeting with other mayors, we, and staff were reviewing our community surveys that we've all taken, so Mr. Reynolds presented our survey that we did, what, ten months ago? And it's interesting that communities and then how they do their surveys and their outcomes. Also, interesting that we use the, when we presented our survey that we did a year ago, we also looked at some of the early results from our envisioned Shakopee and in our survey and the, the envisioned Shakopee just is happening now, the information and, and feedback that we're getting are pretty matching up about, about our community, I thought that was pretty cool. The other night, on Friday night, most of us attended the holiday, holiday fest of, I don't know how many people, four to five thousand people, parade, Christmas tree lighting, fireworks, awesome, awesome thing. I sat back and watched the crowd and I went, this is really the, this is what community is all about. Communities of, of age groups of kids to seniors, we had great weather, coming together just to enjoy a great night, I, I, I can't say enough. So a great effort by Main Street and the city on that and a good job. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the unveiling of the Chief Shakopee bus and statue downtown. I want to again thank the Shakopee Bedewakadon community for helping us with that. The other night, we had a MVTA board retreat, Bolton and Mank put that on and if you've ever been to one of those board retreats, this one was actually very productive, so I thought it was done very well, did some strategic planning and kind of focused on some creative ideas for revenue streams for the, for the bus, things like that. Also was at the downtown holiday fest, again, echo what the mayor said, just a sea of people. It was a great event, adding the parade and fireworks, I think, might have helped, the weather might have helped, but it was just a good time had by all and thanks again to the chamber for putting that on in the Main Street program, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Mokel?
On Thursday, November thirtieth, I had the SDA meeting. We were, they spoke about, they did get a grant from the city of Shakopee for the envisioned Shakopee program, so they will be putting that together to help us with our planning. They also applied for a Propel grant for some monies. They're working on a new website and they also have a call out for new board members and that will be happening, their annual meeting is January. And they started their planning of international festival. So, and then Friday night, of course, I also attended the downtown holiday fest and enjoyed the festivities, it was great to see everyone and my son sang in the choir, so he had a good time as well. And then on, last night, December fourth, Spuck, on the water side, we had South Bridge Crossing, water should be completed this week and the Whispering Oaks Station is also finishing completion. And if you haven't seen it, it is beautiful and there's been many compliments of it, so get out to that area and look at that. And then they did increase the residential rates on water for, at ten percent. And on the electric side, there was one outage on eleven twenty-five for one customer for sixty minutes and they said they couldn't really find the problem, but they do, thought it was possibly due to a fuse. And then the Windermere is the joint trenching getting done and then Prior Lake is finishing that construction, so construction is wrapping up at the Spuck side, so, and that is it.
Excellent. And then?
The, uh, the holiday festival Friday night, I was walking down First Avenue with having a couple of beers and I had flashbacks to when I was like fifteen years old. It was a great experience.
Having a beer at fifteen.
Wow.
In the middle of the street.
Oh, you could only do that in Chaska.
The middle of the street.
It was, it was a, it was an A this time around.
You weren't racing a car, though.
It was an A this time around, but it did bring back memories.
I bet. Mr. Reynolds, administrative report.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to follow that, Mayor.
Don't get you into flashbacks.
Uh, we, we, we've already started looking at holiday fest, what a, what a great, uh, great event and we know from a city standpoint, we have to do things, tweak some things and do things a little differently to make it even better, so we've already started those discussions and then obviously we'll work with the chamber as, as part of that as well. I attended the LMC Metro Cities Annual Meeting on the twenty-ninth, went fine without any issues. As I said a little earlier, this afternoon, I made a presentation to the Saint Francis Board of Directors where I talked about the city, our budget and potential for growth, so that was a very well-attended meeting and certainly was a great opportunity for me to be able to brag about this organization and this community. And then finally, tonight, right before this meeting, Mr. Nelson, Chief Coleman, myself and a couple others met with the town councils of both Louisville-Jackson Townships to talk a little bit about our fire service contracts and the fees that they can expect next year and they weren't happy with paying fees, I mean, that's natural, but they certainly understand, understood why the fees were what they were and we wanted to make sure that we had communication there and that meeting went exceptionally well. That's all I have.
Well, thank you very much, Councillor Lewis.
I'd just like to make a motion to adjourn to December nineteenth, twenty seventeen at seven PM.
I have a motion in a second. Before we go, though, Councillor Lewis, you were in the paper the other day and apparently I missed an email. And, you know, around the time that you said, I do not have this email, apparently you sent it to the paper. You know, I was in communication with you on September nineteenth, a week before that.
Is this part of council norms?
And I was also, we were here in this chamber seven days later, you know, if you would like to meet, I'll meet with you right here in this chambers right after this meeting.
It's common practice to give at least twenty-four hours notice.
To you, a council member, for a meeting?
To anybody.
All right.
If I could comment on that, you know, I, I saw your article too and I was just a little, little bit shocked. You had talked to the chamber president about having a meeting with the mayor, you had talked to Doran about having a meeting with the mayor, you had talked to someone else about having a meeting with the mayor, why didn't you just call the mayor, I guess? I just don't understand it.
You want to comment? You have a comment?
It's the same BS that you guys always talk.
Call a question.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, meeting is adjourned at nine thirty-five, thank you.